Let's wait for Susan to come back. All right. Good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, December 3, 2024. This is the regular board meeting for the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We will begin today with a moment of silence, and Supervisor Pyska has a moment of silence.
I'm going to read a little bit from John Carleese's obituary. John Carleese, a proud and generous Italian-American, and his, all his life, 80 years old, he died of heart failure on Wednesday, November 6. John was born on the Lower East Side of Manhattan to Sicilian-American parents. He was a graduate, we went to high school in Manhattan and City College of New York, and had a lifelong career in banking and affordable housing, working in Philadelphia, Washington DC, and Chicago with Fannie Mae, multifamily housing, and then Fannie Mae Foundation. Since 1998, he had been CEO of the Neighborhood Development Collaborative, a national developer and manager of affordable housing. Commonwealth Housing Corporation, part of the collaborative, had its headquarters in Cobb with a national staff and board. John loved Lake County since he arrived in 2001. He volunteered with the Lake County Broadband Solutions and other local projects, including the Cobb Elementary School Garden. The Summer Italian Village had a special place in his heart, and he was a happy member of 14 wine clubs in Lake County. John is, and Napa County is, he's survived by his wife, Polly, of 26 years. And John, I came to know him shortly after I moved back to Lake County. He would always come to the Cobb School fundraisers and at the dessert auction, always buy the tiramisu for well over $1,000. He loves supporting the garden. He loved, he loved the Cobb community, and after the Valley Fire, was really instrumental in helping us build the Cobb area council. He would just give money wherever it was needed, really helped, really helped cultivate leaders, and he spent a lot of time with me, so I'm really grateful for his support over the years. When this says he volunteered with Lake County Broadband Solutions, he saved Lake County Broadband Solutions along with some other local investors. He was really critical to keeping that business afloat just because he knew that broadband was so important to our community. So I'm going to really miss him. I'm going to miss our summer dinners together at the Italian Village. So dedicate this moment of silence to John Carleese.
(Inaudible) Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and move on to item number four. Consideration
of any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Anything from staff?
No, we do not.
And anything from board members? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Any board member wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, 5.20.
Okay, 5.20. Any other items? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for public input. Anyone wish to pull an item for further discussion? And I apologize, Johanna, I have not opened up Zoom. No hands in Zoom. All right, I'll get there eventually. So let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent agenda as posted, 5.1 through 5.19, 5.21 through 5.24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries, and we'll take up that item at a later time. We're going to go ahead and move on to public input, our 9:02 AM item. This is for anything the public wishes to express that is not on our agenda today. You'll have three minutes. Please come on up to the podium if you wish to speak. And seeing none, are there any hands in Zoom at this moment? No hands in Zoom. All right, let's go ahead and close public comment. We move on to our next item, which is our pet of the week, and we have Officer Saldano.
Good morning, everyone. I'm actually going to have Pancho. He's our newest member at the Animal Care and Control. He's our officer, Officer One.
Welcome to the team.
Good morning and welcome, everybody. My name is Francisco Palio. I'm a new officer at Lake County Animal Control. Today, we have with us Peppermint, or Pepper for short. He is a six-month-old German Shorthaired Pointer mix who has been with us since late October. Pepper is a sweet and fun-loving puppy who is already neutered, vaccinated, matricut, and ready to be in his forever home for the holidays. If you or someone you know is interested in adopting him, please come to our facility at 4949. Help us drive in Lakeport. The kennels are open from 11 to 4 during the week, and 11 to 3 on Saturdays. Please help us find Pepper a loving home.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, Pepper. All right, let's go ahead and move on to our 9:05 AM item, item 6.3. It is a public hearing. A. Consideration of lease financing by the County of Lake and Lake County Public Financing Authority, the authority, to provide financing for certain public capital improvements, seated as the Lake County Board of Supervisors and Board of Directors for the Lake County Public Financing Authority. B. Seated as the Lake County Board of Supervisors, consideration of resolution of the County of Lake approving proceedings by the Lake County Public Financing Authority for the issuance of lease revenue bonds in an initial aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million. C. Seated as the Board of Directors of Lake County Public Financing Authority, consideration of resolution of the Lake County Public Financing Authority authorizing the issuance of lease revenue bonds in an initial aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million. And we have Mr. Carter. And team?
Good morning, Board. Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. With me today have Patrick Sullivan, the Treasure Tax Collector, and Genevieve Harrington of Auditor Controller, County Clerk, and Bobby from KNN, one of our contractors. And online should be Scott from Jones Hall.
Ferguson.
Ferguson, sorry. Just in case there's questions related to legal. So on July 16, 2024, your board provided authorization for staff to explore two options of financing for the armory repurposing project, and directed staff to bring back final bond issuance documents for approval. That's what we're doing today. During that meeting, you also approved the Fund Balance General Reserve Debt Management Policy and Lake County Debt Advisory Committee Policy. Quite a mouthful, but those are very important policies. In the time since, we have worked with both KNN and two separate law firms to work on these documents, and that's why we are here today. And I would like to turn it over to Bobby for the presentation related to this.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Spadier, members of the board. Bobby Chung, KNN Public Finance. Is that too loud?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Usually you want to speak right into it, but it was coming out just fine.
Okay. I have a brief presentation today that summarizes the progress made to date. And, okay, great. Thank you. And I could just...
I think you have to scroll.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, as a quick reminder, I am from KNN Public Finance, the county's municipal advisor, and it's my job to help provide advice and assistance when the county so desires to interface with the debt markets. As Mr. Carter said, your board approved conceptually moving forward with this project at your July meeting. And since then, we have worked with your team to build the financing team. We went and did many RFPs to select bond counsel, disclosure counsel, a trustee, and we've developed over the last couple of months this set of financing documents that are on file, which are necessary to complete the financing. So what you have before you today is a series of two resolutions, one for the Board of Supervisors and one for the Financing Authority Board, that basically authorizes staff to complete the financing, given a certain set of parameters that are within these two resolutions. I'm going to talk briefly about the plan of finance on the next page. The plan of finance will generate $20 million for projects, primarily the sheriff facility armory renovation project, but also generate, you know, if there are extra funds, funds that could be applied towards other capital projects, basically within the next three years. The bond transaction will fund a debt service reserve fund equal to one year's maximum annual payment, and pay for all of the cost of issuance necessary to complete the financing. And so the table on the right has the sources and uses, where the sources consist of the bond par amount that we are anticipating will be issued, the bond premium, which is generated as a function of the actual sale of the bonds. That generates total sources of $21.8 million, and the total uses consists of the project fund deposit, the reserve fund, and the various costs of issuance. We're estimating that the true interest cost, or the borrowing rate, based upon current market conditions for a tax-exempt fixed-rate 25-year bond is about 4.23% in this market. The bond transaction will have level fiscal year payments, which is detailed on the following page, with principal being paid annually each June 1, starting with June 1, 2026, and interest will be paid semi-annually each December 1 and June 1, starting with June 1, 2025. The lease revenue bonds will be callable at the county's option after 10 years. So at that point, should your board decide, you can either refinance the bonds at lower interest rates if market conditions permit, or you could simply use cash on hand to pay off a portion or all of the debt thereafter at that point. Since this is a financing structure based upon the county's ability to lease property, we are leasing the sheriff facility to be improved and the existing county jail facility as a part of this transaction. And the goal is to price the 2024 lease revenue bonds via a competitive sale once we are ready to do so. The next slide has a lot of numbers, but it is the estimated schedule of principal and interest for the full 25-year term. And as you can see, we have a small stub payment of interest in the current 24-25 fiscal year before the level debt service payment, when you take into consideration both the principal and the interest over time through the final maturity. Couple of key credit highlights. Your management team met with representatives from Standard and Poor's, a credit rating agency, back in October. Last time I was here, I talked a little bit about the criteria that the rating agencies use to rate, you know, public agencies and these types of bonds. S&amp;P actually rolled out some brand-new criteria in early September. So their new criteria kind of has five different buckets, each weighted equally, management, financial performance, reserves and liquidity, debt and liabilities, and the economy, each of those buckets being about 20% of the rating. And so we made a presentation that kind of hit on highlights in each one of these categories, including the financial management policies that you adopted at the July board meeting, where you approved moving forward with this project. We talked a lot about your budget process and how your actual budgetary results over the past couple of years were very positive. We talked about, you know, the county's strong fund balances and reserves, pension, OPEB status, economic highlights, your zero debt burden before this issuance, and some of the cybersecurity and disaster preparedness that the county has adopted in recent times. We don't have the credit rating yet, but we anticipate it being issued quite soon. We were just waiting for some further diligence on the title sites, on the title for the sites that we're using for the lease financing. The next slide is the same timeline that I showed during my July presentation, and as you can see, several of these key milestones have been completed. You know, as I've talked about, developing the financing plan, determining the method of sale, evaluating assets, developing a stack of documents before me, meeting with the rating agency. And so today, we are here before your board, seeking approval for the transaction, and yet to come are to, you know, finalizing the rating, posting the preliminary official statement, and actually pricing and selling the bonds into the market. The next slide is just a brief picture, snapshot of where interest rates are generally. This is a chart of the Bond Buyer 20 Bond Index, which is a tax-exempt index of a 20-year borrowing rate, going back to the year 2000. So as you can see, the current rate right now is about 412, long-term average 409. So as rates have fluctuated over time, we are right around the long-term average today. So we're not in a very high interest rate environment. We're not in a very low interest rate environment. You know, we're right at the 24-year average for rates. In terms of next steps, you know, we are asking for the adoption of the two resolutions today. After that occurs, assuming that it does, we will receive the credit rating, finalize credit enhancement, which is bond insurance. That's really a mathematical exercise to see if it's economic or not to purchase a bond insurance policy, given where your credit rating will come out, post the preliminary official statement, bond pricing, and then bond closing. So that wraps up my prepared remarks, and I am here to answer any questions for your board.
Thank you very much for being back here and your presentation. Any comments or questions from board members? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a background question, because I wasn't here in 2011, and this is probably for staff, but on the two resos, the Public Financing Authority originally dates back to 2011 and included Lake County and Lake Osan. So, but I don't have that JPA in front of me, so I don't know what the original purpose was of it when it was founded, or if we're operating within the four corners. I'm going to assume we are, because we have a perfectly good JPA that does public financing. But I guess my question is, what happened back in 2011 when we first found in this puppy with Lake Osan? What level of debt service is already existing within that JPA? And are we, in fact, able to use this JPA to do debt financing for something that is not a sanitation project? So...
So some of that I will actually defer to Scott, who's online right now. Jones Hall is actually, who is one of our vendors for this project, and they wrote the document back then. Do you, do you want to take it, Scott?
Sure, I can take that. Good morning. Scott Ferguson with Jones Hall, we're the county's bond counsel for the financing. So the JPA agreement does authorize the authority to issue debt for either of its members, being the county and the sanitation district. This would be the first time, in my memory at least, that the authority's been used to do a general fund financing for the county, but it is within the authority of the authority. It's got very broad ability to do financings for both the county and the sanitation district. And just another thing I would add is that any debt of the sanitation district that the authority facilitated doesn't affect the ability to do debt for the county. It's a separate credit. It's a separate credit, and there are no limitations bleeding from one onto the other.
All right, so follow-up questions. So although the Lake Osan is referenced in the resos, it's the JPA itself that we're sitting as the board of today to do the approval, and we don't need any separate approvals sitting as the board of Lake Osan, and we don't have to demonstrate any purpose with the original JPA and the financing of the sanitation district. I assume it was some sanitation-related project that we initially formed the JPA to do.
Yes, and it could also be that the sanitation district was a readily available existing entity, since the JPA does need to have two public agencies as members. So, but that's correct. The, no approval of the members of the JPA is required for the authority itself to do financings. And the reason the county's acting in this transaction is because the county is the other party to the lease financing. So Lake Osan doesn't have any role and doesn't need to have any approval for this financing. That's correct.
And I appreciate the question. I had the same question yesterday, reviewed the resolutions that created the JPA, and I think that was just foresight that in the future, there may be some needs for public facilities or infrastructure outside of Lake Osan. And so the way it was crafted was that both have the ability to access, because it is a little confusing, but I think it's only in the recitals that it just brings back the history. It's not involved in the signature page or anything like that for Lake Osan.
So in your inquiries, do we have any outstanding debt service apart from what's before us today?
Outside of Lake Osan, there is no debt service to the county.
Okay, thank you.
At this moment in time. I don't believe there's ever been any debt service engaged in by the county outside of Lake Osan. This would be the first.
Definitely not general fund.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? So I do have a question, and I apologize that I didn't have this question yesterday. Suddenly, it hit me as we were talking about this process where we started back in July, that we did a policy, and in the policy, if I'm correct by what I'm reading, it says that the county shall strive, granted, it says shall strive, not limit, to have general fund leased debt service be less than 8% of general fund expenditures. And I'm going to give a number, but I, it's only the number that I believe I know, that we're within the range of 90 to 100 million in general fund expenditures on our annual basis. And so we're looking at almost a 20%, which is way above and beyond the eight. Like I stated, it doesn't say that we shall not go beyond eight, but it just seems strange to create a policy that says we shall strive not to, and the first thing we do is break our policy and go twice as much, if not more than twice as much, into our, into that percentage that we already set into our policy.
Bobby has an answer to that.
Chair Sabatier, I believe that 8% is an annual debt service figure, not a total par amount issued, so.
Gotcha, so it would be the 1.4, not the 20 million. Gotcha.
So I think we're well within.
I appreciate that clarification. Okay. I'll just provide my input. I had some hesitations and some concerns last time when we discussed this. I still have those same concerns. I understand the need, but I also feel that there, in my opinion, if we are going to go into debt service, there has to either be a dedicated revenue stream that pays off that debt service, or there needs to be a return on the investment that we can expect to see our revenues grow. An office building, in my opinion, does not equate to increased revenues. It does equate to better comfort, maybe better welcoming to the community, to those office buildings. But I'm just concerned, we are already seeing a decrease in the, granted, that might help us refinance in the long run, but we are seeing a decrease in the interest rates, which will probably impact our overall investment portfolio. And so that number that we've seen grow will probably see either an absolute flattening or possibly a decrease. We'll see in our next report what that looks like. But I just, that's 1.4 million dollars a year that we don't have a specific dedicated fund. And in my opinion, that means either A, we take away from services, or take away from other growth that we were looking to obtain, that again, I think would be focused on revenues being increased. If this was a economic development project that we were doing a debt service for, to me, that would be less risky than to develop an office space. So I'm going to stand where I was last time, and I just wanted to at least express that, and I will leave it at that.
Can you talk about the payments?
Yes, so the payments, this would be the maximum. This is not where it will land. So once everything is completed, we'll either do an information only to the board, or come back as a board item to tell you what the actual amounts are. So this is a max, but the way the policies that you guys, your board, sorry, your board approved in July, anything above the ongoing revenue, which we always have in between 10 and 20 million of fund balance available, the first shot at that money is always debt financing, and then anything else like capital assets, which are vehicles and all of that. So in the 20-plus years that I've researched, there's never been under about $7 million of that carryover, so there has always been at least the 1.4 to cover this cost. On top of that, we were planning on creating a reserve, like we have the Building and Infrastructure Reserve, those kind of reserves, a reserve of at least one to two payments, so that if there is a year, let's say, that is an absolute disaster, and we have no FBA, which would be pretty darn dire, we would still have two years' worth of payments available to us at any second.
Thank you for that response. Actually, I did have one other question. In the memo, it speaks to and other public projects, I believe. It speaks specifically. Can you speak on that? Is that just for future things that will be brought to the board? Is that things that are already in the thought process of adding it to the, because here it says up to 25 million. We're not, it says not to exceed $25 million for the, that service. We're talking about 20.
You're approving 21 only, so we'll never go above the 21.8 that, from the presentation. We're not going to go above that. That's just, the document provides room just in case we needed it at the time. So what you, your board is only approving what is before you today, which is the 21. Bobby has something to say.
Yeah, Bobby Chung, just to clarify, the resolution permits the par amount of the borrowing to be up to 25 million, but it's our understanding that the bond will fund $20 million of project needs. And we need some of that cushion, because as a function of the sale of the bonds, that bond premium amount is a little bit variable. It won't be determined until we actually price the bonds, so we wanted to give ourselves a little bit of cushion. But the understanding is that we're funding $20 million of project costs under this set of assumptions.
And going back to the 20 million, the Armory Project is expected to be about 18 to 20 million dollars. If we go out for the 20 million, there is a list of projects that we submit with the bond, that if there's any leftover, we can use it for those projects. So there's already 10 specific projects that have been listed out. One is the courthouse and the purchase of the fourth floor back and remodeling for about six and a half million. There's the jail phase one of $2.7 million, so that's an expensive roof over at the jail. And there's also 2.5 million possible for one of our museums to actually retrofit it and refurbish it. There's a few other, I believe the other five or six are roofs that are in dire need of fixing.
Okay, I appreciate that. Just to clarify, I get it that we have a specific number we're looking to do, and we need flexibility, but our approval would be for not to exceed 25 million, because that's what we're stating today.
That's correct.
As a board. So if you did spend 25 million, you would have the ability to do so, just by the vote that we are giving you. We're not saying limited to the 20 million. Our specific action is not to exceed 25 million. Would you come back to us if it was 22 million, or if it was 23 million, because of that flexibility?
I absolutely would.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because we're saying 25 million, but you're saying 20, and there's something in the middle here.
Where I'm going with 20 is that's the amount that's coming to us.
Yes.
So, and everything you're approving today is the 20, anything above the 20 to 25 is a buffer for all of those extra costs related to borrowing, and it's estimated at one point, 8 million. And it just gives the buffer just in case it's slightly higher or lower, not that we plan on going out for 25 million.
Rates and payments and things like that. It's not, so you can say, oh, this project's going to take all the way to 25.
We're not adding projects or anything.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's right.
Okay.
So we're halfway down the road on this Armory Project, and we don't have the funding to do it. And so the options are proceed with this type of financing, or drain reserves and...
It would drain all of our reserves, other than the one general fund reserve, and I don't know that we'd quite have 20 that way. And then it would take five to 10 years to ever replenish those funds. I don't think.
Dangerous option.
Yeah.
That's a dangerous option.
And Patrick actually has some numbers, if he would like to share them, about where if we keep 20 million, how much we would earn in interest versus how much we'd be paying on interest.
Yeah, I would just highlight some of the comments I made at the previous meeting that, I mean, it's hard to know exactly with rates, but right now, our pool rate crossed 3% for the first time in a long time, or at least I'm aware of. So even in that middle range, if our rates weren't to go higher at the pool level, in about 20 years, it would approximately break even with the amount of interest charged against that bond that we're looking at. Fact is, our, probably with rates coming down, what we're currently expecting is that by the end of next year, our earnings will probably level off. I mean, if rates were to stay the same, our pool would catch up to the current rate at that point. It takes us about 16 months, 18 months, to cycle up to the current rate levels. So if we were to go higher, that 20-year mark would slim down. But either way, for the most part, if we get the bond rate we're looking at, this is not a huge difference, one way or the other, between what the pool can earn and what we pay per the bond interest. In the long term, in most scenarios, we actually come out ahead in terms of borrowing the bond, borrowing the money through the bond. If it were shorter, that might change things. But the model we're currently looking at, with the scenario being discussed today, it's probably financially beneficial to borrow the money, keep that cash on hand, for two reasons. One, for the potential earnings, but more importantly, for our liquidity and the safety of our portfolio. That ensures that we don't risk running short on cash, that we don't have to sell our other holdings early, or borrow money in the short-term market, which is not good for us. So holding on to that cash, keeping it on hand, I mean, that would certainly be my recommendation.
And that where I said it would use all of our reserves to do this project, if anything came up like an emergency roof of 2.7 million for the jail, we wouldn't be able to pay for it. Where if we kept it and earned the interest, we would have that money available for those projects, if and when they come about.
Thank you.
Just one more thing, and if, let's say hypothetically, like when, you know, we were able to receive funding from different federal, you know, pots, I guess you could say, like ARPA, you know, things like that, and funding was able to be utilized for some of this, what we're talking about, some of these projects, this keeps us from having to use this funding, right? I know we said this possibly, but.
Correct. So any money that we use ARPA, or if we were able to get a grant for, let's say, the solar piece, that leaves, you can use that funding instead of the bond, and that remaining bond money can be used for those other projects on the list. So yes, you can still go and should still go out for possible grants, et cetera, and it does not preclude using it.
All right. Thank you for those questions. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please come on up to the microphone, and I'm going to start in Zoom. We have Benjamin Hiddle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I really appreciate you guys doing this, and I know it's a lot of work. I also appreciate Mr. Sabatier, your idea that we should have income coming in from some other source to cover everything, and would like to see a bond related to a renewable energy initiative focused on jobs more than jails. And I know they're both important, but I believe if we do a long-term $20 million bond on a solar project, the revenue is far exceeding anything that has been discussed today, and would love the community to look at not just a solar project, large-scale, either on the landfill or another brown site, but also increasing our biogas utilization for renewable energy, which will both of those projects bring a lot of jobs. So thank you for your time, and this is a great conversation. The last thing I'd like to end on, if we're really financing stuff, if we look at a Bitcoin chart over a 10-year plan, which you guys are talking about, it far exceeds everything here, relates to security in a short and a long term, and hope that we look at that in our portfolio. I did put that in a comment about six years ago as well, about the Bitcoin in the community's portfolio, and I think Bitcoin was at $5,000 then. So it's not a joke to look at other avenues beyond traditional financing, and especially to Mr. Sabatier, thank you for concluding we need to create revenue to pay for these. Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you for your comment. I believe that we are very limited in what we can invest in, and I do not believe we are allowed as a government agency to invest in Bitcoin. I'm getting some nods all over here, but always looking for new ideas. Anyone wish to speak on this item?
I will say about the solar that we're putting on this project, it's going to save a lot of money over the course of the life of the asset, because it's going to cover, hopefully, all of the PG&E costs for 25 years or so. I'm going to say forever, but no.
Well, we know the sun will probably still be there in 25 years, so it'll be helpful.
Seeing no one getting up and no further hands on Zoom, I'm going to bring it back to the board for some action, or further comments, either one.
Sitting as the Lake County Board of Supervisors, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered?
Mr. Chair, just to.
With a pause?
For clarification, that would be under item B, the resolution is being offered under item B.
Yes, yes. As the Lake County Board of Supervisors and not the Public Financing Authority.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca? And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Sitting as the Board of Directors for the Lake County Public Financing Authority, item C, under the recommended actions, I offer the resolution.
Yes.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Crandall?
Yes.
Director Green?
Aye.
Director Pisca? And Director Sabatier?
Nay.
And it passes. Thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So we need to reopen it and pull it? Okay, hold on, let me check to see the timing we have here. All right, so there's been a request to reopen the consent agenda if we can have a motion to reopen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and we need to pull item 5.1. 5.21?
5.2?
5.21 for next week? Okay, so we're going to table 5.21 as requested by the department, and we will go ahead and open it up for public comment on pulling any other item on this consent agenda. I see no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. I'll bring it back to the board. I see no hands in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. I'll bring it back to the board for action outside of 5.20 and 5.21.
Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.19, 5.22, 5.23, and 5.24.
Point of order real quick. Isn't that a separate motion to reconsider? The motion to reopen is simple majority, but then to redo the, are the motions to reconsideration all the consent agenda items we did previously?
Yes, so your board, as the next step, may approve a motion to rescind the previous motion approving the consent agenda. And then from there, the next motion would be to approve the revised consent agenda items.
Rescind the motion that I just made.
Is that a majority motion or four fifths to rescind?
I don't think there would be a problem, so let's go ahead and give it a shot.
So the first motion would be to rescind the prior mo, and to Vice Chair Crandall's point, I believe that there was just a motion, wasn't seconded, so there was no vote as to that specific motion. So the first step would be to, your board, would be for your board to submit a motion to rescind the prior motion approving the consent agenda.
So moved.
Again.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.19, 5.22 through 5.24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go ahead and take up item 5.20 now, since we have a few minutes. Authorize the Department of Public Works to apply for fiscal year 2025 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant for the South Main Street Soda Bay Road Project and authorize the Chair to sign a letter of support. I want to pass it on to Supervisor Green, who pulled the item, so he can let us know the reason.
Yeah, thank you and appreciate Director March being here. Pulled it for a couple of reasons. One, two years in this job, I was under the impression this project was fully funded, so I was a little surprised to see the grant application. And also, the second part of this recommended action was to approve a letter of support, but that letter of support has not been written yet. So I think, and I've spoken with Director March, and he's here to answer any questions. I think the, the appropriate thing to do is just get board approval to move forward with the grant application. I think that's certainly worthy of support, and if there's any questions at the board, Mr. March is here to answer them on that. And then come back in January with a separate letter of support that the board can consider for approval at that time. And that would still keep us within the timeline of the grant application, which I think closes at the end of January. So that was it. I was deliriously happy to see this on there as a bid to get some new funding in there. A little more surprised was my reaction to find out it wasn't fully funded. So Mr. March, if you could provide some education for the board, I'm sure they would appreciate it, as would I.
Good morning, Chair Sabatier and members of the board. I'll provide a quick update on the project. The project has been under design for some time. We have an October deadline to finish the design. I'm working with upper management at our designers to develop a project team to bring this project home. If we can think of the project as two pro, two separate projects, that's how it was created, and that's how it's separately funded by Caltrans. There's a South Main Street portion and a Soda Bay portion. We have funding within the STIP grant. We, we have approximately $4.4 million set aside or identified for the South Main Street portion, and about $600,000 identified in the STIP for the Soda Bay portion. Some funds have been set aside for the project from our non-discretionary funds that could be used for various types of roadway projects. So rather than tap those discretionary, non-discretionary funds, we, I would like to pursue the Raze Grant. It's important that, I'm seeking authorization to pursue that Raze Grant so I can seek letters of support from other entities such as City of Lakeport, Caltrans, and other agencies. So the total project cost right now is estimated at about $14 million. That's $11 million for construction and $3 million for construction management and engineering support during construction and staff time. So there's approximately, there's an opportunity here to go after approximately $7 million to replace those non-discretionary funds. And I think, working with the Caltrans staff, they're very optimistic about this grant pursuit. So we've developed a team or assembled a team to go after this grant.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? If you're in Zoom, raise your hand. In the chamber, come on up to the microphone. Seeing none, bringing it back to the board for action.
Okay, and as we discussed, I'm just going to tweak the recommended action a little bit. We'll bring that letter of support back later. So with that said, I move, that, move to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for a fiscal year 2025 Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity or Raze Grant for the South Main Street Soda Bay Road Project. Period.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Let's go ahead and go to item 6.4, 9:45 a.m. A, Presentation of the County of Lake's Opioid Settlement Funds Expenditure Plan, and B, Approve Letter of Support for Lake County Behavioral Health Services Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Grant Application. And with us, we have Director Jones. Welcome. Other side.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board. Johanna, I believe there is a presentation in the Grandicus, and I apologize, I should have given you a heads up. While we are doing that, I can give a verbal introduction into the county's opioid settlement funds, what they are and the planning process that we took to develop the expenditure plan. So all counties received, in California, received settlement dollars, and those settlements were litigated largely by California tribes for the irresponsible distribution of opioids. And so Lake County has seen several million touched down, and those funds will continue touching down in perpetuity for about 18 years. And so we determined it would be very important to develop a community stakeholder and engagement process to drive our, our plan for expending those funds, similar to the Mental Health Services Act process. So not reinventing the wheel, recognizing that that MHSA stakeholder process is a decent process. And of course, I'm calling this MHSA Lite. It's not quite as intensive. It's not as much money. Perfect. So, slide two.
Hold on, we're, we're not sharing quite yet. Oh, it is being shared.
Beautiful. Thank you, Johanna. Yeah, so as I was just describing, this is the basics. All counties are required to report to the California Department of Healthcare Services to make sure that the funds are being expended according to the guidance that's been issued. The department has issued guidance around high abatement activities that they would like counties to prioritize spending of this funding on. And of course, the whole point of, of this is opioid remediation, all along the continuum of care from prevention, early intervention, into treatment and recovery, right? Every spectrum of care. Next slide, please. All right. So Lake County Behavioral Health is the administrative entity responsible for managing these funds. Earlier, or actually in the fall of 2023, we selected Health Management Associates to consult with us to develop this plan. HMA is a nationally recognized consultant that develops plans and actually has contracts with the California Department of Healthcare Services for a variety of projects as well. So super stoked that we were able to get such a high caliber consultant here to do this work with us. And I know that there's many folks out in the audience that got to participate in that, and so I hope that was a positive experience for everybody. So we convened four, four-hour stakeholder gatherings over the course of this past year at three different locations. Two of them took place right here in these chambers, the, I believe, the first and the last. And we also sent out an electronic community survey, and we did key informant interviews, or rather, HMA did. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is really the nuts and bolts. The first thing we needed to do was identify where in our continuum do we have gaps and barriers to accessing services, particularly as it regards remediating the use and misuse of opioids. So we, it was a great process, one of my favorite bodies of work actually I've ever participated in. But we broke them down into five different categories from structural, prevention and education, treatment, community aftercare, and then social determinant of health factors that impact the opioid crisis. So those are itemized. I'm not going to read through each and every one of them. They are in the plan that's on, attached to the agenda. But we felt that would be very important to identify like where, where our energies need to be focused because we don't have gaps everywhere. We do have treatment, we do have programs, so we want to be very mindful about expanding on those existing bodies of work and not duplicating work. We did not want to be duplicative. All right, next slide. Okay, so this is a beautiful graphic that after we identified where our gaps and barriers were, we did some community prioritization. And those that are circled in the dark black are the ones that were most highly ranked by our stakeholder groups. And so you can see in the structural area, we really are looking at workforce development solutions. Where are the treatment providers that are going to provide services? Healthcare short, we are in a healthcare shortage area. The workforce crisis in behavioral health is very real, and it very much impacts this. So how can we potentially address those workforce challenges through this funding to support the opioid epidemic, epidemic, excuse me? All right. So these are the priority areas, a nice little graphic here. And these, this is not a comprehensive list, but this is a list of various community-based organizations that are involved in some way, shape, or form in those various components, the structural, prevention, treatment, and community aftercare. Again, this is not exhaustive. There, there are certainly other entities, but these represent those folks that was at the table and participating with us that we already know are doing important and big work. And why is that important? Because we got to know what we're doing, so we know where we're going, right? And where the gaps are. Next slide, please. All right. So this is my favorite slide. No, that's not true. My favorite is yet to come. This is one of them, though. So these are really highlighting specific actionable items that we can use that are in alignment with the high abatement activities from the state's guidance of potential things that we can do to, with this money. So there's a variety of them, again, all falling in line of those five categories. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk a little bit more about those high-impact abatement activities. So the, there are several of them. So this is what the state would really like to see counties focus their money on. And in fact, you are required to spend at least 50% of your county's opioid settlement funds on these specific types of programs. So the first one is provision of matching funds for SUD facilities that are applying for a Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Grant. Of course, you're familiar with Prop 1. That was a two-parter. It was SB 326, and it was also a bond measure. So this is part of that bond, and we'll talk a little bit more about the two grant applications that the county, Lake County currently has. Also creating new or expanded SUD treatment infrastructure just in general outside of the B-CHIP process. Addressing, of course, the needs of communities of color, marginalized and vulnerable populations, diversion of people with SUD treatment needs from the justice system into treatment. It's important to recognize that we have had a SUD diversion program for a long time. It's been very successful. And so, you know, ways that we can bolster that. Interventions to prevent drug addiction in vulnerable youth. You see a lot of that, very important work. And of course, last but not least, the purchase of naloxone for distribution. We really want to see naloxone saturation is the concept that we're using, making sure that we, everyone that has, needs naloxone has it. There's no shortage of naloxone. All right, thank you. So here are some financials to date. So since we began receiving those opioid settlement funds, we have about $5.2 million saved away. It is in its own fund or its own account, separate from the rest of behavioral health monies, of course. We have only spent $49,000, close to $50,000, and that was entirely on the consultant, HMA. So we have about 5.1. And here are two proposals for two Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Grants. One is the county's own application. We are working, and Lars isn't here, but he does, I notice, have an evaluation later, and I just want to let everybody know that he is the best. I love Lars. So he is working very hard on, on developing, we've already gone through a body of work to revitalize our South Shore Clinic. If you've been to our Clear Lake Clinic, it's, it is awful. And so we're very excited. We actually have fully drawn up plans for a beautiful new clinic. That was about $250,000 worth of work that we've already done to prepare for this application. So our total request of the state will be about 6.5 million, and we have already previously, months ago, when this first touched down, requested the board to allocate or approve allocating $650,000 as the match for that. That application is due December 13th, so we are right there. And then the other B-CHIP application coming from Lake County is being put forth by Anchor Health Management and Redwood Community Services for a behavioral health campus in Lakeport. That will include a 16-bed mental health rehabilitation facility that does include a, a space for detox support. So integrating dual diagnosis care, right, so that we can address those people who have detox needs in that facility, as well as an outpatient clinic for SUD and mental health, potentially for both children and adults. The inpatient facility is adults only, but as your board is aware, we have no facility in Lake County. So this would be our very first, which is very exciting. And so Anchor's request of the grant is about 14.8 million. And because this is one of the high abatement activity areas, it's expanding SUD treatment, they're eligible to use opioid settlement funds as a match, and their match request is 1.1, about $1 million. Next slide, please.
So we're just leveraging about 2 million of this.
Look, there it is. This is, this is my favorite slide.
I just wanted everyone to understand.
This is my favorite slide.
Yes, this is very, very exciting.
Yes, you are, this tickles me. Thank you, Supervisor Pisca. So as you can see, we have a little, the yellow is our 2 million that we have in opioid settlement funds, and then our return is $20 million back into the community. How sensational is that? All right, next slide, please. So what's next? Obviously, these applications, we're working very closely. We're, that's going to consume all of my time, attention, until December 13th, when I press submit. But after the first of the year, when we have this plan, we're going to come back together internally with our, our sister departments and look at what work can we stand up? You know, we have very close partnerships with Department of Social Services, probation, health services, and I'm sure I'm missing out other departments potentially, like where could we internally use this to support high abatement activities? If there's work that's, we know where can we weave this in, or where do we need to go out to bid for these services, right? And so we already do have some interest in the community about expanding youth residential treatment, for example, which is a high need. So that's what our work is going to focus on. So we expect to see a lot of activity beginning next year on either standing up county-run operations with opioid settlement funds and/or going out to bid for those services that's in the high-impact abatement activities that align with our local plan. And all of this will be on a website page, webpage of, on LCBHS. So all updates similar to the MHSA, you can go there, look at everything, full transparency. So that will be announced shortly, probably beginning of next year. We'll have that page ready for the public. I think we're, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Supervisor Pisca.
This is really exciting. I know it wasn't easy to be in the position to get these funds because we had to endure a lot of loss and a lot of addiction issues throughout the county. But new projects like this, and to be able to leverage the funds in this way is incredible. But new projects like this, and to be able to leverage the funds in this way is incredible to have these two new beautiful campuses. And I'm also going to talk a little bit about the jail that we just approved the bond for that, because these investments are critical for our county. We have not seen new building and new development on this scale in a long time. And behavioral health and public service are not revenue generating, but they are what our community wants. Our community members are always talking about public safety, mental health, substance use. These are the facilities that really will make a difference with the wraparound programs. So this is really, really important and really exciting. So, and also, the construction jobs that are going to be available with all of these projects are going to really strengthen our workforce and keep a lot of those people that commute over the hill all the time to work on big jobs other places. So all of these projects together, and this item and the last item, are going to do nothing but wonderful things for our community. So this is very, very exciting.
Thank you. I would also like to point out that this B-CHIP, the behavioral, that grant is, this is just the first round. We just, we're ready and Anchor, Redwood was ready, but there's rounds in perpetuity. So we have more options for building facilities.
Any other comments or questions? So I appreciate the process that went through. The conversations at these meetings were great, people that care about making change, caring about reducing the harm to folks in our community, family, friends. Unfortunately, I don't know that the opioid crisis has not touched anybody that's probably in this room. It's had a huge impact on Lake County. There's a lot of options that are in front, and I think what's difficult for me is to try to figure out what are the costs of each options, which obviously that's the next steps that need to be taken. What are the impacts of each option in comparison to others so that we have the greatest outcome based on the amount of money that we have? So I'm looking forward to a little bit more granular view later on when there's more available information to really say, look, this, this is the impact that we can foresee with this, and this is the cost that it will be based on our estimates and whatnot. I know I just voted no on the other side, but here we have revenues that will be coming in for the next 13 years, or 14, 15 years, whatever's left over. Has there been a thought or a conversation about debt service to look at the entirety or 15 million, 13 million while we use the 18 million to pay that off so that we can look at what can be spent today versus on an annual basis? I know right now we have 5 million, so it's a little bit more, but on an annual basis we would be receiving 800 or 900. I'm looking at what's the biggest impact that we can make rather than slowly spending a certain amount of money. Has there been any conversations about that whatsoever?
I'm, I don't think I understand what you mean by debt service.
So right now, we're going to get, we've been receiving about 800 to 900,000 dollars a year through this settlement, and it's supposed to pay off over the next 18 years, which means if we want to look at the whole entire amount of about 18 million dollars, we would have to wait the 18 years to collect the 18 million dollars. If we did debt service and loaned the county, let's say 13 to 15 million dollars, that it's covered by the 18 million, all of a sudden we would have 15 million dollars to spend today, or whatever that amount would be. I'm making up numbers because I don't have anything in front of me. That way, we can look at what can we spend as the larger amount today versus small incremental amounts and using that to leverage a huge amount of funds. If 2 million can get us 20 million, what can 10 million get us if we know we can pay it off with the rest of the payments that we're going to receive over the next 15 years? So it's just something in my mind on how to leverage these funds to the maximum, maximum amount. And I appreciate that you brought up the B-CHIP, and I also appreciate you called the B-CHIP because I always want the H to be after the C. But there's also 50% of all these settlement funds were received by the state of California, and I do not believe that is the B-CHIP. I think that's the Prop 1 bond that has opened that up. But they also receive 50% of the settlement funds, which can be used for matching funds for other projects as well. Am I correct about that?
I don't, I don't think so. The B-CHIP, B-CHIP existed before the bond, and that's because the state had a surplus, and then they took it away because they were broke. And then they had a bond, and that's how they got more money. And bonds aren't also, I don't know. I'm not, I, I'm not a global finance expert. I can speak really clearly about behavioral health financing, but I, I'm not sure how to answer your question, Mr. Chair. I apologize.
Okay. Do you know if the state received 50% of all settlement, settlement funds?
No, I don't. Well, tribes did. I am not sure what allocation the state, like the California Department of Healthcare Services would have received. I don't know how much they have, but I know that local tribes, because they were the ones pushing the lawsuits, received their own funding. But I'm not aware of what funds the state, opioid funds the state may have. I don't, I don't know what they have.
Okay. That would be good information to know. If I remember correctly, when we went through the settlement stuff, I thought that about 50% was supposed to go to the state for overall state infrastructure. CAO Parker?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'm going to, I'd like to offer assistance to Director Jones to look at those ideas that you brought up to see if they are actually feasible or doable. But I do offer our office to assist in reviewing that and bringing that back to the board if you so like. Thank you, Maceo.
And I'm just looking for further ways to leverage. You've already done so with the B-CHIP and are looking to do so again, just looking for further. And instead of looking at what we have currently, the 5 million, I want to really take a look at the bigger amount, just because I think when there is a specific revenue stream coming in, then it can help pay off if we get a loan to help make a bigger project and a bigger impact today rather than having to wait the 18 years. I'm much more in favor of building infrastructure, which is what you're focused on right now with the B-CHIP process that you're following, just for the fact that that will remain in the future versus if we pay for services, once the money's gone, then the services might have to go away if we don't have the ability to continue to pay for those things later in the future. There was one more thing. Yes, the, who was again, the Redwood Services and?
Anchor.
Anchor?
Yeah, Anchor Health Management.
Just a question on the process for that, just because it would be using county funds to help support a project done by someone else, not the county.
Yes.
What's the process? Should we be expecting some kind of contract before we provide that matching fund so that we understand what we're getting ourselves into? Because at this moment in time, I just have, I only have an idea. I don't have anything concrete in front of me.
Yes, sure. So the process for the grant, if the, any entity applying has to get approval from the Behavioral Health Director, because you can understand behavioral health has situational awareness about the community's needs. And so they got that, right? They got the letter. That's the first thing you have to have, easy work. And then what will happen is we'll have a contract between County of Lake and Anchor Health Management to give, pass them the opioid settlement dollars and what they can use it for. And then after that's done, we'll also have, well, we have many, many contracts with Redwood Community Services for a lot of levels of care. So this, these other levels of care, the MHRC will just get baked into our existing contracts with them. We're looking at just having one contract with each contractor and all of the services just listed. So that will be the last probably phase. And that's the sustainability piece, right? That we're drawing down Medi-Cal revenue through billing of the MHRC and the other beds to sustain these. That's really critical for the state to see that counties are drawing down federal funds as most, as much as they can.
Okay. I'll look forward to that because I think the details are important, at least to me it is, to better understand how we're funding someone else's infrastructure with obviously a community benefit in the long run. Any questions Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I wanted to, my favorite slide is 11. No, my favorite slide is nine. So, and I appreciate your very efficient description of the South Shore Clinic as terrible. But maybe you can expand that, look at this exciting need that we're going to fill here. This looks kind of a capital thing, so his comment about, you know, debt service and all that. Both the outpatient clinic on the South Shore and then the one proposed by Anchor Health and RCS, these are bigger projects, these are capital projects. So one question I have is, in today's recommended action, we have a letter of support for our project, the outpatient clinic. Is it too soon or has RCS or Anchor reached out to us for a letter of support for their project?
No, it's not. They aren't, it's not required, but it couldn't hurt certainly. I just didn't include that because I've already provided them the letter of support from the county, but I-
Through the department?
I don't have like a letter of support for, so this is my letter of support for the county's internal project. Does that make sense? Like the RCS already has the county's support because I gave them that as my role as the director of behavioral health. So that's why I didn't include that.
Well, I don't know. How these support letters work or don't work at the state level, I don't know. But I'm going to assume maybe a letter from the full board might carry as much weight or a little more than one from a director, so.
It may.
Just throwing that idea out there, if a letter shows up later, say after I'm off the board, I think it'd be a good thing. So I'm excited about all this. I appreciate the hard work put forward by yourself, your department, and the consultants. Really good roadmap here. My next favorite slide would be seven and building a rehab center adjacent to the jail for walk-ins and drug, drug court diversion. So there may be, if there is an opportunity to fluff up what we're already doing out there with the Armory Project and use some of that financing for that purpose, that might be helpful. So that's it.
Thank you Supervisor.
Any further comments or questions Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, obviously in support of the program. Thank you for all the hard work. You know, these funds are much needed. Just want to make sure, you know, psychiatrists, you know, having psychiatrists in the county to work in person, not online, because I think that's a big part of the program is we have all the other surrounding factors, but really getting down into that personal work with the individual of why, you know, and then a program to work through that. So hopefully all the work we're doing here, but psychiatrists being the focus of that, having in-county, because online just, it's there. I know it's, it's a tool, but I think those in one-on-one working sections with the individuals who are going through all these issues is why, why it's happening, the decisions you're making. So just want to make sure there's a focus there because I know bringing psychiatrists to Lake County is a challenge for tribal health. It's a challenge for everybody, each one of our nations, and I think that's really important, and I think we could all benefit, you know, every government in the county and every citizen if we have those psychiatrists in-house. So big focus.
Supervisor, we definitely agree. That's beyond even this, that is-
I know.
-our big focuses. So to the extent we can bring those in-person providers, we, we will.
Okay.
All right. With nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on this item. And at this moment, we've only really been hitting on A, so I'll reopen public comment when we discuss the specific letter for B.
Good morning Board, Chair. Victoria Kelly with Redwood Community Services. We are very excited about this project and about many of the partnerships we have with behavioral health, and, and we have vision for the future with behavioral health. To answer, I had a couple answers to some of your questions Chair around, so RCS and Anchor individually have been awarded B-CHIP projects for, for different, for different projects. One here in Lake County, RCS is excited to be expanding our two-day perinatal residential program from an eight-bed facility to a 16-bed. That's going to be breaking ground in this next year, and then we'll be able to serve 16 mothers and their children in that facility. And we'll be able to also have the experience of going through that B-CHIP process because it is an arduous experience. Anchor Health Management also has a B-CHIP bond around three, and they are finishing their MHRC in Mendocino County, a 16-bed MHRC. So they have that experience under their belt. So combining both of our experiences and moving into this, which takes on a whole another level because it will be licensed and, our, our plan is to license it and credential it as a MHRC in a 3.7 facility, which is something that we do not have in rural California in our access points. The closest one is in Humboldt County, and then there's really nothing else in rural northern California. And so that's where the detox, the medical detox comes along with a 3.7 credentialing. We also are now embarking, re-embarking on our outpatient peri-services to, to match with our residential. And like Elise spoke to, we, we hope to even explore youth outpatient. We do have youth outpatient in Mendocino County through the partnership model. So there, as much as I, I think the process in which we get to, to identify match funding, which was significant, and if you look at our number, I mean, 14 million is a lot of money. Our balance of the state is really only 58 million, I think. And so it's a big chunk of what the balance of the state portion is, is asking for. But we are showing through our two projects and linking them that we're really investing in, in a continuum of care in Lake County that we have significant gaps in. And that is through some residential mental health support and the SUDS residential, and then having a really robust outpatient clinic that can provide those wraparound services for people to step into, to have those built-in relationships on the same campus that they had residential services, on the same campus that they had built their success residentially, and then can continue in the outpatient service with the same providers and warm hands-off. So I just wanted to give a little bit more of the specifics of the project. I can go into more detail later because I, we do have those specifics. We do have the, the plans in mind and how we're going to sustain it over the years. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Jarrett. I attended all four of the sessions. There were really supposed to be only three. I was an outsider, really. I'm not, I'm a retired teacher in the, from the Connecticut School District. I also spent eight years on the school board. I have plenty of, of experience making budgets, both at the school level and the district level. And this was kind of a frustrating experience for me, I have to tell you. We spent at least 30 minutes of every meeting doing get acquainted activities, and, which I think was fine for the people who are going to be working together. It was a little frustrating for me. I kept asking for numbers because for me, to evaluate the worth and in the decision-making process, you, you really need to know what the numbers are because sometimes something that costs very little has a big impact, and something that costs a lot is really not worth it. And we never, ever did get any numbers. And I would ask at the very first meeting, now, when we make recommendations at the end, who's going to be the decision-maker? And we were told, we will be the decision-maker. Well, at the end of the second meeting, we were told that it had already been decided that $650,000 out of the first 1.2 or 4 million has already been set aside for this renovation for the mental health building. And I was very upset about that because we had already been told that we were the decision-makers. So that, then the second meeting was taken up with an explanation and a rationale of why this set aside was necessary. And I can see for sure that this is a really good idea. But you know what? That should have been said upfront. We're setting aside this money, and now after that, here's what we're going to do with the rest. And so the whole thing really seemed to me to be kind of a, not a fruitless exercise, but an exercise, if you notice that from, from the accounting, when we finally got to the fourth meeting where we took the stickers and went around and prioritized on the charts, we were down to 23 people at that last meeting, down from about 40-something, that we're finally prioritizing, you know? And that, to me, was not a good indication of the follow-through, you know, of what we were doing. And I was really not happy with the way that we were, had been winnowed down to the last 23 people who are making the final decisions. So when you look at that final chart-
Your three minutes are up at this moment in time, if you can finish your comment.
Excuse me?
Your three minutes are up, if you can finish your comment.
Okay. So I- So I, I, I just wish that you would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question real quick?
Please.
Director Jones, was there like another, um, thought process or, or? Oh, I'm asking Director Jones. Was there another idea for what they wanted to steer towards or something of the like? Because just in reference to what the, she had said.
No, we knew, we saw an opportunity, we had a need with the expansion of the South Shore Clinic. So it's not just to remodel, it's adding, um, we physically don't have enough offices to hold our staff. And so that's a real barrier to expanding treatment. So we knew that's like a slam dunk right out the top. But aside from that, it was truly an organic process where we really wanted to hear like, where are the needs? Of course, our role is behavioral health. We look at the whole network of care and we have kind of a bird's eye view, um, an expert, uh, opinion on things. And so it's our job to impart that and to kind of show and hold the framework of it. But we really wanted to hear everything.
We had been having those discussions about upgrading that facility here.
For a long time.
A long time, yeah.
Hi, Kim Tangerman, Deputy Director of Public Health and longtime coordinator for SafeRx. I am so sorry about your experience because I'm here to, uh, express the complete opposite. I do not want to miss the moment, um, this moment to, uh, to elevate the process that was taking place in order to get those slides and to get that information. Dealing with a lot of different counties, uh, that process was non-existent in other counties. They just got the money, started spending the money in, in ways that they felt needed to be, um, spent. Not that, that it was wrong or, or misappropriated, but it was not what we did. Those four sessions, I felt really showcased behavioral health's, um, need and want to get the members, get the agencies all together and find out, how can we make the best out of this money? And so for me, um, to be a part of that as through public health, but also SafeRx and to hear things that I maybe had missed, uh, because I'm not on the streets all the time. I'm not, you know, doing the work that these people are doing, I felt it was rich. And I think that what we've come up with is, um, a really, really, we can stand behind it and be proud of it. And no matter who challenges us, I think we've got, um, the data to show that this was done in a way to best serve the community. And so I just needed to, to call this moment of recognition that this was a great process.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment from the chamber? And I see no hands in Zoom. And so I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Green.
Just to follow up on that question. So I get the process, it was inclusive. Thank you to the consultant doing that, getting that community input is important. To the speaker's concerns though, I, I kind of agree on, uh, slide five of the plan as it's proposed. And we don't even have a role in adoption, I think it sounds like. So there are several highlighted boxes on page five that were identified as priorities. But I don't see any dollar amounts attached to those various things. And the first ask coming before us today is that kind of a $6 million rehab of the clinic. So clearly BH has opined that that is of all these various projects, the highest of high priorities. But, um, to the extent that this plan is going to be a living document and actually guide our funding decisions, I don't know that it gets us there, right? If we have $18 million roughly to talk about over the next five years or whatever, 18 years, however many years it is. So I, I think this outreach has been successful in identifying the priority needs and the highlighted boxes. But, um, uh, I guess I share some of the same questions expressed by the speaker. Where's the dollar amounts? We, we've identified one, two, three, you know, a baker's dozen of priority areas here. You know, what is the plan to prioritize those various spending categories? And, and then start staggering them for implementation. So as a plan goes, I guess I would give it an incomplete. It may check the checkboxes that the state wants. And it may serve to inform us, both as a policy board here and the community as, as to what the priority needs are. But it, it doesn't to me, strike me as a full, full-fledged plan of action to spend these funds once we, uh, get all of them rolling in. Is, is that a fair comment or criticism? And is there something you could say to address, uh, the shortfall of the, the financials in this plan?
Thank you for those comments, Supervisor Green. As I discussed earlier, after the first of the year, uh, county departments will be getting together to look at those most recommended areas of program development and begin to pencil in numbers and ideas. It is not simply as simple as putting numbers to things, um, because we do a lot of braiding of funding. Uh, I do a lot of braided funding and it requires a level of situational awareness about other funding and needs that have alignment that the community may not possess. And so that's why it's important that we use this plan as our guide work and we stay true to that. But it is intentionally, um, it is not, I called it MHSA Lite. It is not supposed to be that level of granularity for us, uh, because that will be unnecessarily limiting.
Supervisor
I see this, as you said, our guide with our priorities. And you do have the broad view. You do understand the many, many pots of funding that are there. And so, you know, we don't know if certain funding will be, um, you know, a better fit for other of these projects. We don't know that. But this is our guide, these are our priorities, this is the road that we're going down. And, um, I was only able to attend the first meeting. So there is a certain level of attrition that happens when you have, um, a series of meetings. So you, you know, it's never the same group that started. It's never the same, you know, the large group that started. It's the, it's the hardcore people that, um, stay through the end. So it, it, it is, um, you know, sort of normal for these types of processes to have that attrition. But I do hear you and I understand. But this is really what I'm taking away is this is our guide, these are our priorities. This is, um, how we're going to move down the road together.
And I, I don't disagree. I think that we can't provide the financials. I think the, 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 maybe the confusion is it's called an expenditure plan when it's not necessarily, it's a vision of what the funds can be expended on. But knowing exactly, are we building a new facility? Are we helping to expand the services? How many beds are we talking about? I mean, there's so many details within each category that it's impossible to set a specific amount. And so that's why I was saying, uh, we can get granular as we go further into the process. What I'm hoping for, and I believe we are going to, is there's going to be RFPs put out saying, "Here's what we would like to see. Please submit your proposals based on what the community has requested that we do, uh, to fill in the voids, fill in the gaps." And at that point, we would have a very equitable process to figure out what is the best proposal with the best benefit to the community in order to spend the dollars in the right places. I will add one little caveat that looking at, for example, the Redwood Services, I think it sounds like a great project, but I am curious how we got there versus an RFP of saying, "Submit your BH, uh, your B-Chips projects to see which ones we would like to connect our funds to" versus, I don't know how that conversation came to be. If it was a, uh, personal conversation between two agencies that work a lot together already on multiple projects, uh, that it came to be. But I would like to see an RFP process to ensure that we're getting the gamut of potential projects and they, and choosing the best, um, rather than working on, uh, specific projects that may alienate other better projects from the process, uh, as well. There is one other part, um, my opinion. This money was provided to the people of Lake County to provide a better platform to deal with the opioid crisis that we are still dealing with, unfortunately. SafeRx has made some massive changes in the sense that we are not seeing the same level of prescription, the same level of pills being sold at our pharmacies. But unfortunately, especially if you look at our OD maps, uh, once those things changed, unfortunately, people moved on to street drugs. And that's when we can really start the overdose and overdose death rates really skyrocketing. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I think that, uh, I, I don't know if it was in your memo or if it was within the context of all of these conversations. The main goal is reduce deaths. We have to give people a chance to live and have great lives and not succumb to these opioids. But I think the final decisions, in my opinion, should be the board of supervisors. We rely on the experts to bring us what they believe is the best thing to happen. But I think because it is the people's money, that it is the people's decision as well on how that money should be expended, uh, with high value placed on the experts that bring us the projects that they believe are the best projects. And I'll leave it at that. And I don't believe you need any approval for part A, uh, based on what the memo says. You just wanted to make visibility and transparency on the process and let us know of the community, uh, meeting outcomes. And I believe that we are done with part A unless there's anything else you would like to add.
No, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we're going to move on to part B, uh, which is the letter of support for the B-CHIP project for the expansion of the behavioral health facility in Clearlake. Would you like to add any more than what you've already provided?
It will create hundreds potentially of new treatment slots. A big focus of that clinic will be on children. So we'll have a family-friendly lobby, which is really important to me. It's just such a critical, I can't under, I can't under, overstate how important that is.
And I think the location is prime for helping those with great access to that, uh, that facility as well.
I actually want to remark on that. We are, uh, we are geomapping all of our crisis calls as well and we have a lot of data. So we are definitely focused on those high, Clear, the city of Clearlake, um, and other areas as well. But yes, geographical region is important to us in the selection, of course. MHRC is in Lakeport, which is great because we don't have a big presence in Lakeport, actually, so.
And the issue is all around the county.
Yes.
All right. Uh, any comments from board members on the letter of support? I'm going to open it up for public comment, as I stated earlier, on part B for the letter of support. I see no movement in the chamber, no hands in the Zoom room. Bringing it back to the board for action.
I move that we approve the letter of support for Lake County Behavioral Health Services, Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Grant Application and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and take a, uh, 10-minute break and we will reconvene at, let's go ahead and come back at 10:45. Let's go ahead and continue where we left off. We are on Item 6.5, 10:15 a.m., Presentation of National Flood Insurance Program. This has been requested to be moved to our December 17 meeting. And checking in with Johanna, do we have a time certain that we would like to move it to?
Yes.
I believe the answer is yes. 1:00 p.m. on December 17? Okay. Any comments from board members on continuation? Seeing none, opening it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this? Oh, Shannon Walker-Smith.
Good afternoon, Board. I just wanted to make myself available if you had any questions.
And does December 17 at 1:00 p.m. work for you in your department?
It does.
All right. Thank you so much. And I see no further. Please come on up to the microphone.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors Chair Julia Carrera. I'm here representing the Upper Lake Community Services District Formation Committee. On behalf of Ben, our president, who couldn't make it today, we want to make sure that when we review this in December, that we are addressing the fact that Upper Lake currently is struggling to be able to find flood insurance because of the condition of the levee system. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that and possibly that can be addressed in the presentation of how residents in Upper Lake can obtain flood insurance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I see no further comment from the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. And so bringing it back to the board for action on continuation. Again, December 17, 1:00 p.m.
Move to continue this item to December 17 at 1:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to our first untimed item, 7.2. Consideration of Advanced Salary Step Appointment of Danielle Dezon to Health Services Administrative Manager. And we have Director Arton.
Am I good here? I don't think that this is going to take too long, so. Yeah, so happy to get hopefully Danielle back to our county government. We opened up this position about four months ago. The initial round of interviews did not yield a good candidate, so we reopened it. We had two pretty good candidates, but Danielle really stood out with her knowledge of the county government and being in the auditor's office. She recently left county government about five, six months ago and wishes to return, so she was at Step 5. So when we made the offer that we were allowed to make, she came back and said, oh, is that Step 5? Could I please have Step 5 back? So this is an important position for us. The fiscal manager role will help, help me fly a little bit more as a Health Services Director. I'm really operating with a lot of lack of knowledge on our budget. So this position will help with quarterly reports for our budget, running fiscal analysis when we're looking at program usage and program planning for the future, as well as assist our Deputy Director of Finance and Administration. So this is going to be a very important position to help me succeed and help health services succeed. So loved her experience, loved her answer. She interviewed very well. She tested very well as well. We do an exam as part of this interview process, and she aced it. So I was very, very excited to see her candidacy.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Green.
Just a question, because it came up during class and comp. So in her previous role, it's not equivalent to the position up here for today, right?
Oh.
So the Step 5 from her previous service in the auditor controller's office is not necessarily directly in line with the new job classification and her experience and qualifications for those expanded duties. And I'm only going to raise that because I'm concerned about that and I'm not immediately supportive of the Step 5 on this. So I see Pam's here, and she could probably speak to that better, better. I'm not going to say better, but either one of you or both could speak to that. She got her Step 5 previously under the auditor controller. She's in a new role here, which has a broader set of duties, some of which she does not have prior work experience for. So can you justify the Class 5 or explain that the majority of the Class and Comp Committee did support this?
So, yes, and he did not know this at the time he put his staff memo in because I did not have all the data back. We have 50% of the Class and Comp Committee voting for Step 4 and 50% agreeing with Step 5. Me, based on her experience, I would actually recommend Step 4 because this is her first management. She's going from a supervisory role into a management role. So I think Step 4 would be sufficient, but I do understand the department need.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Supervisor Pyska?
What step did you offer her before?
I believe we were allowed to go to Step 3.
Okay.
I believe we were allowed to go to Step 3.
So Step 4 is, is an increase.
Would be an increase, yes. However, can you refresh my memory? What was Step 5 in terms of her salary when she left? Do you remember?
The job grade would, it's a lateral job grade. So had she remained here and went over, it would, she would have stayed at Step 5 in a lateral move because it's the same job grade.
And so basically, that results in a decrease in the previous salary that she had received? Just, just to...
That is, that is correct. 5% decrease.
Yeah.
I do just want to chime in that I worry that if we go with Step 4, that she will probably likely turn down the position. She said Step 5 was the only thing, when I, when we made the offer, she said Step 5 was the only thing that could financially make sense for her. So although I probably agree with a Step 4, I just worry that if we go, if we go to Step 4, we'll probably have to start this search over again.
Appreciate that.
Is it a difficult to fill?
Absolutely.
So it is coming with? Is it coming with any incentive? It's difficult to fill?
I don't believe it was coming with an incentive because of timing-wise of when it was run. So we had, I believe, one other qualified candidate in this round as well. I don't know that it's, I can say that it's difficult because we, we kind of posted in staggered timing. Because we thought, the Health Department thought they were going to go with it. We posted, they pulled it back, we put it back on. So when they were making budget considerations, the job got pulled. So I'm not sure I can qualify it as difficult because of the timing.
Yeah, just to elaborate a little bit on that, during the first round of interviews, we only had one qualified candidate that made it to an interview. That candidate failed the exam pretty poorly. So, and then just finding, finding, qualified accountants are pretty difficult in itself, let alone one that can lead a team and run fiscal analysis and do everything that is involved in a health services budget because it's an extremely complex budget with various funding sources. So it's just a lot. It's a lot of work. And part of the, why we pulled it during my first initial months of my tenure was just a lack of understanding. When I came on, we have, I think, a team of four or five accountants plus a Deputy Director of Finance and Administration. So to me, I was like, this seems pretty administratively heavy, and I came from an organization with 120, and we had four accountants for an organization of 120, we have four or five for an organization of 60. So it was kind of curious as to what, so I put that more on pause more than anything until I kind of gained a better understanding of what this position was, what it could do, and what the needs were. So once I got that figured out, then I was like, absolutely, we need this position. So I think we started running it in July or August of this year, if I remember correctly. So.
Thank you for the added info. Supervisor Green?
Just to clarify Supervisor Pyska's question, I think it wasn't, is this a difficult recruitment? Is, is it on the list of previously approved difficult? This hire would be, whatever the step is, they'd still be eligible for incentive?
I would have to look at the timing because of the way we pulled the recruitments to see if it qualifies. It is a hard-to-feel position, though, but you still have to meet three out of five of the criteria to get the incentive. And so I'd have to look at the timing between the last two recruitments to see, because you have to have two failed recruitments. And because we've pulled it on and off, I'm not sure that this would be eligible. I'd have to look at timing.
CAO Parker?
Yes, thank you, Chair. How long would it take for you to do that?
Like, five minutes?
Can she go and come back and we can take another?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get that information to better understand what exactly is the incentives around this hire versus the Step 4, Step 5, or whatever else that we decide on. So let's go ahead and postpone the decision on this. We'll bring back 7.2 when we're ready to come back to it. Let's go ahead and move forward with Item 7.3. A. Consideration of Contract Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Inc. for the construction of the Chalk Mountain Bridge Replacement Project, Federal Project Number B R L O 5914-094, in the amount of $25,270.77, increasing the original contract amount of $6,176,906 to a new contract amount of $6,202,176.77. Authorize the Chair to sign the change order. And B. Consideration of Contract Change Order Number Two to the Construction Contract between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Inc. for the construction of the Chalk Mountain Bridge Replacement Project, Federal Project Number B R L O 5914-094, in the amount of $52,668, increasing the contract amount of $6,202,176.77 to a new contract amount of And authorize the Chair to sign the change order. Director March?
Excuse me. Good, good morning, Chair Spatie. I'd like to introduce DPW's engineering team. We have Pablo Pentaleon, who's been with the agency for three years now. And we have Estrella Yunes, who's been with the county for a year. And you can ask them questions about their experience and their time here. But let me ask Estrella to address this item. She's ready.
And if you could speak right into the microphone, please.
So Change Order Number One calls for the incorporation of federal funding contract requirement documents. We included FHWA Form 1273 and also the federal, federal wage rates for the time when this was bid. And Change Order Number One also addresses some drainage changes. We upsized the culvert and did some grading changes to prevent any erosion around the embankments we were putting up. And Change Order Number Two, it calls for including some environmental mitigation measures. We needed to have the contractor plant some willows for the mitigation.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that description. Any questions or comments? All right, none, simple enough. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. And hearing none and seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring that back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Contract Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Incorporated, for the construction of the Chalk Mountain Bridge Replacement Project, Federal Project Number B R L O 5914-094, in the amount of $25,270.77, increasing the original contract amount of $6,176,906 to a new contract amount of $6,202,176.77. And authorize the Chair to sign the change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Contract Change Order Number Two to the Construction Contract between Lake County and Stewart Engineering, Incorporated, for the construction of the Chalk Mountain Bridge Replacement Project, Federal Project Number B R L O 5914-094, in the amount of $52,668, increasing the contract amount of $6,202,176.77 to a new contract amount of $6,254,844.77. And authorize the Chair to sign the change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Item 7.4, and I need to read that whole thing. A. Consideration of Contract Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Greg Simpson Trucking, Inc., for the Construction of the Socrates Mine Road Landslide Repair Project, Federal Project Number FEMA 4308-DRCA, in the Amount of $9,722.10, increasing the original contract amount of $491,864.53 to a new contract amount of $501,586.63. And authorize the Chair to sign the change order. And B. Consideration of Contract Change Order Number Two to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Greg Simpson Trucking, Inc., for the Construction of the Socrates Mine Road Landslide Repair Project, Federal Project Number FEMA 4308-DRCA, in the Amount of $139,202.25, increasing the contract amount from $501,586.63 to a new contract amount of $640,786.88. And authorize the Chair to sign the change order. Director March?
Good morning. This is Pablo's project. Pablo is a project manager, but he is going to allow me to address this item this time. And next time, when we bring this back, project back on the 17th for board acceptance, Pablo will do the presentation.
We're looking forward to it.
This are the large retaining walls on Socrates Mine Road. The first change order is for the construction of a head wall to prevent erosion control at one of the culverts. The second change order, number two, is for additional paving and grading that was required because the road had continued to deteriorate after the plans were created. So, this is a great solution that Pablo worked out with his construction management team to address the issues.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
Just a comment. This is, you know, a very important project. It's been out there for a long time. Glad to see this coming to fruition. Calpine, obviously, being a great partner with the county, one of the larger job creators in South County, for sure. But, you know, the benefits we get from it, very important. So, I know the folks going up and back, back and forth to work and everything. And I appreciate your department getting it to this point and getting the project completed, or close to completion here. Something we heard about every month since it happened. So, really important that, you know, this, this got completed, or we're very close to. I guess Pablo will be completing it on the 17th, it sounds like. So, or at least the final stuff. So, yeah, excellent. If you haven't been up there or went through it, when it was one-lane road and everything going up and down, really important for the Calpine organization and the county to benefit from this project.
Yes. That's exactly what I was going to say. And we're really excited. This is a huge safety issue. That's a dangerous road. So, having both lanes fully functional, especially getting into the winter season, is really critical. Thank you Pablo.
Supervisor Green?
Just a question. Everyone's clearly supportive of this, but the amount of Change Order Number Two, that's a little bit of a bump. So, was there, was the original project not scoped correctly, or was there something we missed in the original bid award?
I, I think it was the road continued to deteriorate after the plans were developed. So, and the solution with the addition of the retaining wall was to repave a portion of the road and regrade the area.
Thank you.
Several-year project. So, things like this happen when it takes this long.
All right. Thank you very much. And I, I agree, it was a big bump, but I thought that it was well explained as to why. And obviously, we want to, we don't want to go back and refix this road next year. We want to be done, and we want to make sure it works and functions the way that it should. So, appreciate all the change orders and the hard work to get this completed. I've definitely been hearing and seeing pictures of Socrates Mine Road, and we need, we need it better. So, thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments on this from those in the chamber or in the Zoom room? I see no movement and no hands. So, I'll bring it back to the board for excited action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Contract Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Greg Simpson Trucking, Inc., for the Construction of Socrates Mine Road Landslide Repair Project, Federal Project Number FEMA 4308-DRCA, in the Amount of $9,722.10, increasing the original contract amount of $491,864.53 to a new contract amount of $501,586.63. And authorize the Chair to sign the change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Want to do the second one? There you go. Let me just continue.
Go ahead. You're on a roll.
All right, great. Mr. Chair, I move to approve Contract Change Order Number Two, the Construction Contract Between Lake County and Greg Simpson Trucking, Inc., for the Construction of the Socrates Mine Road Landslide Repair Project, Federal Project Number FEMA 4308-DRCA, in the Amount of $139,202.25, increasing the contract amount to $501,586.63 to a new contract amount of $640,786.88. And authorize the Chair to sign the change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Yunes and Mr. Pentelion, good to see you. I thought we locked you in a room and we never got to see you. So, seeing you here is, is great joy. We hope to see you more often. And thank you very much for your hard work.
Nice to meet you.
All right, I see that we have both Director Arton and Pam Samick have come back. And if I can get both of you to come, and let's go ahead and get comfortable in front. That way, we can, no matter the length of the conversation, we can all have our own microphones.
I should assume it'll be in length.
Just in case. So, we're going back to 7.2. Consideration of Advanced Salary Step Appointment of Danielle Dizon to Health Services Administrative Manager. And I'm going to ask, Ms. Samick, what were your findings?
So, it would not qualify for an incentive for two reasons. One, she's a previous employee. And two, it's only been run once. The first one, it was opened in August of '24, but then canceled. So, it wasn't a full recruitment. And then, this is the result of one recruitment is the current people we have. So, they may have run an accountant before, but this, they have not, they only ran the fiscal administrative manager once.
Okay. Appreciate you bringing that to us so quickly.
So, it was opened and canceled in August?
We, but we did interviews, and we didn't make it on offer to the candidate.
It must have been a different position because the fiscal manager has only been run twice. Once canceled, and then reopened in September.
Might have been an administrative error then, because we definitely interviewed for the fiscal manager role in September, I believe.
So, quick question.
Well, you did in September because you reopened it in September. This, this current recruitment, it's only one recruitment because you have a canceled recruitment, which never came to fruition, and then one recruitment in September.
Okay.
Okay. And either way, the fact that she used to work here would...
Disqualify her.
Disqualify. So, whether it's one or two, that doesn't change the outcome of that?
And I remember that from when we discussed increasing or putting these packages together to recruit deputies and whatnot. They, there was a statement made that if they'd already worked here prior, that was an issue. And I think that's where you supported that. It just didn't come to my mind until now. So, sorry.
That way, we don't have people jumping off and on just to get access to those incentives. Absolutely.
And even the secondary candidate, if we move to the secondary candidate, she still wouldn't qualify because you've only had one recruitment.
Yeah. Okay. Just want to make sure. Any further comments before we deliberate and figure out what, what's going on?
I will move forward with the board's decision.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments from board members? I see no further comments. I will, Supervisor Green, you feel compelled?
Well, just, I'm looking at the job description, and I can't actually read the job description as it's posted. I do see text on the first page, but I don't see the rest of it. So, to the extent this board is going to be informed by that or the public, I'm, I'm not informed at this moment. So, I just want to highlight that.
Yeah, the, the attachment had an issue, but as far as I'm concerned, that is a decision that had already been made based, the job description to the actual classification. I didn't feel the need to get more granular into that. I, I, I have just one hesitancy here. I know that there's, it's not just a prior employee. I think this employee has gone back and forth multiple times. I know that we are working on our salary review currently. And I know that one of the things that we kind of talked about the first time we readjusted our salaries and classification was that these, throwing these Step Fives, which before was like Step Nine, Step Ten, and things like that, is another way of increasing the salary without increasing the salary just to make the job more attractive. I don't mind doing it. I know that we have Step Three, which can be approved by HR without having come into the board. Here, we have somebody looking for Step Five, who has gone back and forth multiple times. Each time, it creates work for staff to recruit. Each time, it takes work for staff to train. And I see steps as more of a, and I, I feel like it sounds bad, but more like a loyalty. You've been here for a while. You, you deserve to get the increases for the time that you are spending here, keeping the, the knowledge in, in the agency and whatnot. I, I would be more conducive to say yes to Step Four than Step Five. And so, that is my reasoning and my, my, my decision that I will be making today. And so, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no one in the chamber and no hands in the Zoom room. I'm bringing it back to the board for action.
I don't have it up, sorry.
Michael Boach. It doesn't say Step Five in here. It just says Advanced Step Salary. So, I'm going to, I'm going to take a shot at this. I move to approve the Advanced Salary Step Appointment of Daniel Dizon at Step Five for Health Services Administration Manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And that's three to two. And I believe that motion carries and passes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you all.
And I'll just highlight, you know, I, since it's not closed yet, that, you know, I, I understand this position is difficult to fill, and it's a financial position. And so, I know as fiscally conservative as we like to be sometimes, we need this position to be operating so that we can make better decisions with that as well. So, that's why I felt compelled to vote yes.
And I am on the Class Comp Committee, and I did support the Step Five request, so.
Thank you for your comments.
And I'm on Class and Comp, and I did not.
Okay.
Thank you. We're just going to take a brief two-minute break until we reach 11:15 for our next item. We, we, we will reconvene at 11:15.
So, the implementation plan is more of a compliance plan to ensure that the county has a formal plan, so we can comply with all the formal processes that are part of the Title Six requirements. So, for example, one of the biggest requirements, I think, is to have a complaint process, an investigation process, to see the, ensure that the title, any Title Six complaints are thoroughly investigated and resolved. There are also requirements that we appoint a Title Six Coordinator, which is our Human Resources Director, as well as a Title Six liaison for each department receiving federal funds. So, this is a requirement of the plan, and it's a heavy lift. And, you know, there's going to be training requirements, posting requirements, posting of signs in departments. One of the things that, there is a provisions for people with limited English proficiencies. So, one of the important things is to ensure they get to the bilingual people, so we can improve communications if that's necessary. So, what you have before you is an implementation plan that was developed by staff and our consultant. And if you have any questions...
Thank you very much for bringing this to us. Supervisor Pyska?
I just have one question because Title Six doesn't include gender and Title Nine does, so.
so.
Is that a question or a comment?
I mean, it's a statement. It's a statement. So I'll just leave it at that.
If you have the ability to change federal guidelines.
Yes.
I'll make a call.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just interesting that it's coming up, seems like kind of late in the century to be doing this. Housekeeping items in the draft reso, I don't see this policy itself as being an attachment to the reso, although it is referenced within that document. And then within the draft plan itself, I see several placeholders for email addresses and website addresses and what have you. So I guess a couple of housekeeping items for county council or staff are both. Should the reso be amended to specifically incorporate this policy as an attachment to the reso? And does this draft form of the policy need some polishing? And can it be polished after we approve it today? Or should we do the polishing now? Because there seems to be some yellow highlighting that needs to get fixed.
So as to the amendment to the resolution, your board may amend the resolution to specifically reference the attachment or inclusion of the plan, plan document as a benefit to the resolution, the Title VI implementation plan. And as to the placeholder items, the highlighted portions in the plan itself, not sure if Director March would have that information on hand. It seems that for each page, for a majority of the pages, it references a website of sorts from the entity, along with one page that has the email address blank.
So my intent was to get board approval, then work with IT to develop the webpages necessary to post all the information. We're going to post not only the plan, but also the complaint forms and everything. So my suggestion is that we approve with, approve the implementation plan with the necessary changes to reflect the webpages, addresses, and the email addresses not shown.
Okay. And then follow-up question. I apologize for being snarky, better late than never, I guess. But is it fair to say Title VI is kind of focused on public contracting? And so is this policy proposed for public works only, or is it proposed for the county as a whole? You know, who's the most likely complainants under this process? So again, we have already standing nondiscrimination policies that apply countywide. Is this, is this policy intended to just apply to transactions involving public works? Or is there a broader umbrella that this policy is going to extend over all our county departments?
The Title VI extends over all, all departments receiving federal funds. So the policy should, is, will apply to all the departments receiving federal funds.
Well, without putting anybody on the spot, Pam, I see her in the audience. I feel like I'm missing something here. I appreciate your diligence in bringing this forward. I'm just curious why your department out of all departments have finally found religion, if you will, and decided to bring this forward.
So there are existing policies that DPW has complied with. This is a result of the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans oversight and requirements of the county. So specifically, they oversee the Public Works Department, the roadway funding. And, you know, there has been an increase in their effort, oversight efforts here within this last year and forthcoming. So the majority of complaints will likely come from, related to federal funding for highway projects. So most workers for, on construction projects are well represented and well aware of their rights. So, yes, I anticipate seeing, if we see complaints, I would imagine it would come out from a federally funded highway project or bridge project.
And I just want to add that I appreciate you not kicking the can to another department, knowing that this might impact other departments. The fact that Caltrans kind of initiated the review process and brought it to your attention, and you're bringing it to us, I think is exactly the way that things happen when we find things. So I appreciate you bringing it directly to us. And this is also why Pam Samick is being activated as the point of contact to ensure that we are not violating anybody's rights. She's not going to be involved in the contracting efforts. She's not going to be involved in any of those procurement processes, just to ensure that we are following and doing training is also what I'm suspecting you will be a part of. So I think this is the right thing to do. Yes, it does seem a little late, but the fact is, we haven't had any issues before. We get audited for ensuring our federal funds that we receive are being utilized appropriately. Nothing has come up yet. This will ensure that nothing else will come up in the future. So I appreciate you bringing it to us. I do have a bit of a hesitancy on the blank document, though none of the substantive stuff, I believe, will be changed, just the highlighted sections. I appreciate that being highlighted. What I'm hoping is, can we see a final document? Or can we get an email when the website is up, so that we can at least be in the know and maybe be able to lead people to those areas whenever we hear something or somebody approaches us with any type of complaints that might mimic what's in this document?
Yes, we'll inform you.
Okay. That way, we can get the update. All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none in the Zoom room, no movement in the chamber, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
If we were to add a sentence incorporating the policy as an exhibit to the reso, could you give us the form of that motion? Or it wouldn't be a motion. Again, I would offer the resolution. I'd like to offer the resolution, but I'd like it to be amended to specifically attach the policy.
And that would be your board's option. It would be an offer, the, offering the resolution as amended with that particular amendment being proposed.
And that basically, the Title VI compliance plan would be attached to it, is what you're saying?
As Exhibit A or whatever.
That's, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Resolution has been offered?
As amended.
As amended.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Green.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska. And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye. Thank you very much for bringing that to us. All right, we're going to take another two-minute break, and then we'll come back at 11:30 a.m. for our next item. We were on item 6.7, 11:30 a.m., consideration of a lease agreement between the County of Lake and Lakeport Plaza LLC for office space at 55 First Street, Lakeport. Mr. Carter.
Good morning, Board. As your board is aware, the Public Defender's Office with assistance from administration has been searching for appropriate office space. Apparently, he turns it off. I'll start again. That's very loud. As your board is aware, the Public Defender's Office with assistance from administration has been searching for appropriate office space for several months. Over that time, two potential spaces were identified, one of which would have required significant renovations. On September 12, 2024, the Space Use Committee approved moving forward with negotiations of an agreement for office space at 55 First Street in Lakeport. Before your board today, it is a lease agreement for 4,716 square feet of second and third floor office space at that location. The base rent amount for this space is $9,903.60 a month. And an additional $1 per square foot fee will cover operating expenses, electricity, sewer, things that we would normally pay already, trash disposal, water services, elevator services, HVAC. I'm not going to read the rest. The anticipated term of this lease is 10 years through November 30 of 2034. Some concern has been raised that some clients may not be able to meet with Public Defender staff so near a public park. Chief Public Defender Ray Buena Ventura, sorry, Ray, has provided his reassurance alternative locations are available to accommodate such needs, including space in the current courthouse, like conference room C, A, B, or where they currently are. During multiple rounds of edits to the agreement, a termination clause was inadvertently omitted. So, yep. Language was added to the final version of the agreement, or hopeful final version of the agreement, subsequent to posting of the agenda. The property owner has agreed to this additional language now labeled Section 3. Just go into the red. So most of this is our standard termination language with one caveat. So this agreement may be terminated by mutual consent of the parties or by county upon six months' written notice to contractor. The main difference from our normal notice is that's 30 days or so, but for our property, that's a little too short, according to the leaseor. So that's the main difference. We'll have the, upon termination prorated amount for services, and in the event of nonappropriation of funds, we can provide notice to the leaseor for termination as well. And there have been other comments about budgetarily, since this is quite a large lease. So in our current year's budget for the Public Defender, we do have $78,000 already budgeted, but we also have more than enough to cover the remaining difference from what used to be a remodel budget, because we were looking at a different property at the time. There is more than enough in funds for this year, and there would be no need for increase next year, because the dollar amounts that are already there would stay. They would just be repurposed within the budget. And I believe that's all I have before questions.
Mr. Buena Ventura, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
You can come up if you want as well. Please do.
Sure. Yeah, I can. So first, I want to thank the staff for really helping me out through this process. It's actually more than just two properties we've looked at. We've looked at actually four. And there were some really good potential spots. One was right near the new courthouse. That got pulled out from under us when it was bought by, I think it was Tribal Health. We also looked at the Record B. That was a good spot, but the amount of renovation and the repairs that needed to be done, including having it ADA compliant, was just too much. We also looked at the West America Bank Building. That was a potential site, but the landlord there wouldn't commit. So we are really, I say was, is actually a saving grace that we got, we didn't get those spots, and that we were able to get this one. I will be, we will be very happy for the next 10 years to be in that spot. It has everything we need. There is some, it's close proximity to the courthouse. I can tell you that we want to be good neighbors to our community and to the people that are at the park. We recognize what the law is, and we will abide by the law. But at the same time, also make sure we take care of our clients, no matter what they are charged with. Our staff is bursting at the seams, or just getting really ready to move, because we are, quite frankly, we're suffocating in the building that we're in, in the space that we're in. And I think it's time. And I don't think we, we can't afford to wait any longer. This has everything we need, the close proximity, it's got good-sized office spaces. The county has looked at it in terms of the wiring, the internet capability, the county connection. And I think it's just the ideal spot for us. So I hope we can get your support. Thank you.
And I did want to make one more comment, that we do also have plenty budgeted for new furniture and anything that's needed within any new building that is approved.
Okay. Any questions, comments from board members? Supervisor Green.
Yeah, it looks like boilerplate notary acknowledgement language on pages 12 and 13. I see it's already been signed in Adobe, and I see other signature lines that the contract's been approved as the form. So I'm just wondering if that notary language is surplusage and needs to be in there, if you're anticipating signatures to be notarized, and so.
Yes.
Why are we doing it differently here?
That was, Lloyd, do you have one answer to that? That was actually the leaseor wanting the notary, and he will actually be here at 12:32 sign it notaried wise with Johanna.
There's two fields in there, so it looks like he's going to sign twice. I can't imagine.
The leasie is chair.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So I appreciate the addition of termination, especially in light of the new courthouse being built. Maybe that will generate some new development in the area, and that might create some better options in the future. So rather than being stuck on a 10-year, which is a decent, right now, between First Street and here, it's an easy walk. From First Street to the new courthouse, a little bit different, not in Clear Lake or anything like that, but still, it's a different location altogether. And so I don't know what that future will look like, and so I like the opportunity to be able to cancel. Six months, obviously not the normal typical amount, but I think that it would take that much time anyways to start looking and getting prepared and budgeting and all of this stuff if we did move. So that's not too big of a deal for me. I do know that there were other conversations regarding the use of that facility for Public Defender's Office with the City of Lakeport, wondering if you might want to elaborate on that conversation?
The conversations I had with the city manager for, he had no issues with the use of that building. His only concern was the proximity to the park and certain clientele, which once I provided him, that answer did not have any further objections.
And if I'm correct, in the state of California, I know laws have changed somewhat recently. There's different tiers.
Yes.
Of sex offenders, some that are not banned from being in those locations, and some that by court order are not allowed within certain proximity. I believe the building is about 150 to 200 feet or something like that from where the actual location of the playground is within the park. I'm just wondering if you want to elaborate on that at all.
So we actually did do some research, and the laws have changed. So, we actually did do some research, and the laws have changed when it comes to people who are convicted sex offenders and whether or not you can ban them from going to park. The law actually is that you cannot because it created, the Supreme Court in California overturned that law in 2015, and because it basically argued that you're creating a homeless population for people who have been convicted of those crimes by banning them from certain areas. They can, however, be ordered not to go there by a judge or the parole board, but that has to be a specific condition specific to that client. And again, when I say we want to be good neighbors, you know, they don't have to go, if we're talking about these kind of offenders, there is an entrance on the opposite side. They don't even have to grace the park. They can go through the gas station area. And again, we'd be more than willing to meet them off-site. We even go to our clients' homes and interview them occasionally. So, we have no problems accommodating them and also being good neighbors with the community.
Any further comments or questions? Go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone or raise your hand in Zoom.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Angela Carter. I've been an attorney in Lake County for 33 years, and I practice almost exclusively criminal defense with these kind of clients and other clients as well. Someone give me the high sign when my time is expired. But I have some photos I would like to distribute, and I have enough for everybody. Thank you. It's not the devil you know, it's the devil you don't know. 290 registrants are people who are convicted of sex offenses. Under our California Penal Code, there's a code section 290. When they're released from prison, they have a 2,000-foot limitation between anywhere they are at a park. That's a term and a condition of parole. That's a picture being distributed to you. If you're familiar with Google Street View, if you enter 55 First Street and you do a circle on Google Street View, that is the place structure situated for the littlest members of our community. If you're from Lakeport or represent Lakeport, you know that behind that, there's a bank of five or six swing sets. To the left of that, there's a bigger playground for the older children. But you'll see in that photo, next to the playground for the little, little guys, is the restroom naves. Again, it's not the devil you know, it's the devil you don't know. I have clients that are registered sex offenders that come to me for a domestic violence charge. I have clients that might be registered sex offenders who come to me for a theft charge. You don't always screen folks prior to meeting with them. You certainly don't have a copy of their rap sheet. Thankfully, they're not tattooed or branded in a way that you necessarily can look at someone and know. It worries me, as a member of this community, as a parent who, over the years, took my homeschooled kid to the park a zillion times, the thought of a public defender's office that close to a place where little, little people play. Those parking slots you see in front of that restroom and that little structure, my private investigator used to rent that building. We used to call it the plywood palace. When I would go see him, that's where I parked. That is a normal, commonplace park, walk across the street, and go into this proposed building. These folks need an office. They really, really do. I just feel I have a moral obligation as someone in the know, as a criminal defense lawyer of many, many years. I've spoken to sex offenders many, many times. It's an impulsivity control thing. I don't think anyone would deny that. I don't think setting up a circumstance where those impulsivity problems come to fruition is a good idea, and just exercising my moral obligation to say so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Angela, are you done?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I was going to give her my time before I used it, in case she needed more. And before we start the time, did I just hear the beeper go?
Yes.
Before we started, I'll give you a little history lesson here. The reason that beep, that 30-minute came about was when they had people lined up around the corner for cannabis, IHSS, and all that. It was never intended to silence the public when there's two people in here. It's designed specifically for that. So, to have that and keep that in place is just, it appears to try to eliminate the annoying public from expressing their opinions. So, I just want to throw that out there. You might want to reconsider that at some point. My, I'm glad you guys are talking about the 290 registrant issue. And full disclosure, city manager of Lakeport knew about it because I brought it up. You knew about it because I brought it up. So, I'm glad you guys spent the morning trying to resolve some of that, but she's a lawyer. She cares about the law. I don't really care about it. I don't think these, those folks should be near the park. I don't care if it's legal or not. I think we have an obligation as leaders in the community to determine where our business is operated, and to have it operating in that proximity to a park with that. Thieves can be trained. Domestic violence can be taken care of. Child molesters cannot. Like she said, it's impulsivity, and you want to keep those people away from your kids as much as you possibly can and away from where your parks are. So, you want to consider that. That being said, I highly doubt you're going to change your mind as a result. I mean, the guy's coming in to sign this thing in three hours, so it's obviously been set up already. But I want to point out one thing. Usually, the more square footage that you have, the less it is per square foot for the lease. And you just leased 2,000 square foot for the registrar of voters two years ago, and it's a $1.10 a square foot. Twice the size is twice the money. It doesn't make, that's not a good deal for us, and especially for 10 years. I see that there's a clause in there to try to back off from that if you have to, but it requires, I think I read it right, it requires mutual consent. Is that right, Steve?
I didn't see.
Termination, we just changed it to where we can do it within, we can give them six-month notice.
And they're okay with that? They don't have to, okay. Because I got the old one, the one that was...
The old one had no termination.
The old one is the one that's on the agenda for the public.
Which is why we put it up.
Right. I get that, but you know, that's all the public had to look at till now. So, I was curious about that. But paying double, plus, you know, all these fees for 10 years for a program that, quite honestly, has not proven whether or not it's going to be successful for 10 years. There's a lot of hiccups still a year later with that program, and I don't know if you've spoken with any of the judges or been upstairs or anything, but there's still some growing pains there that need to be dealt with. Part of that, in all fairness, part of that is space. So, they do need space. There's no question about that. But I think this issue needs to be taken very seriously about where it's located and the conditions that apply to this 290 registrant and other things like that. It's nice that you guys go to their homes, but you won't have them come to your home. So, that should be a test right there.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment on this item? I see no movement in the chamber, no hands in the Zoom room. I will be bringing it back to the board for further deliberations. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just, you raised the point, so I feel obligated to respond. Number one, the need for space for our public defenders is amply demonstrated, and we need to move timely, and finding good space, adequate space, is difficult on a good day. I want to highlight that the old-lit office was right next to Courthouse Park, and I never heard brugle about that. I have faith in our public defender and the people who work for him, that they're going to comply with the law in all respects. So, if there is a blanket prohibition on serving 290 registrants within a park, we're going to apply that. If there's some latitude such that a particular defendant may require a court order specifically excluding them from that park area for good cause, then I'm sure they will abide by that court order. But we need this service, and the city has been a good partner. I just want to point out that a clerk just recently relocated from that same office complex to what was formerly a wine bar. And when that wine bar was placed in there, ABC put a license app, and it notified the city that they intended to put a wine bar right next to a playground, and I was the only one who barked about that. And the city rolled over, and we had a wine bar, and now we don't have a wine bar because that wasn't a successful business model. We have Lakeport Police doing foot patrol all through the park areas now. We have good eyes on that playground. We have other concerns that you didn't raise, including the homeless population that inhabits the bathrooms just down the way on Park Street and farther down on the Third Street Boat Ramp. So, it's definitely a high-traffic area, but it's also a very high-visibility area with a proven history of self-policing itself, both by the community residents and by the very hands-on and eyes-on approach to local law enforcement and our partner merchants in that community, including the restaurants. So, there's a lot of eyes on that park, and I get that there's an impulse control that you're talking about, and, you know, I can't rule out, nobody can rule out, the idea that there can't. There would never be a possibility of an adverse incident. But the possibility exists even if you don't locate the offices here, right? That's a standing risk of homeless populations, sexual predators and all that roaming any number of areas within our community. So, to highlight that as kind of a litmus test or a deciding factor for whether to approve this lease, you know, I can't go there, and this is in my district. So, I get to make that opinion clear when I cast my vote today, and it's no disrespect to those who have raised what I think are valid concerns. But I just think the particular focus on this office contract and the proximity to that particular playground is probably a more limited view than I think this board should take. So, I'm ready to move ahead.
At this moment, we're...
Well, I want to respond to something he said was directed at comments I made, so...
At this moment in time, public comment is closed. Appreciate.
No. No, I'm going to respond to what he has to say.
Sir, if you could please sit down. I close public comment. We are deliberating.
Okay. No, I'm, no, that's not, you should talk to county council about that, about allowing the public to talk after a comment's been made regarding something I said. I should have an opportunity to respond.
Thank you for sitting down.
For what?
Thank you for sitting down.
Further?
You're going to deny me my ability to speak and respond to what he said?
There was nothing specifically pointed towards you other than a response to your comment. So, at this moment in time...
Not only is it the agenda, but you don't listen either, so you didn't hear it. So, I'm out of here.
Okay. Anything further, Supervisor Green?
There's nothing further. I moved to...
I would like to further, not just move on into action. So, is there any other comment before we take action?
One of the things that I was thinking about is when we talk about the 10-year lease regarding how long it's going to take for the other courthouse to be built. You know, that was one of the things I was...
So, the most recent information I have is somewhere in 2026 range, and that would be when they would leave this building. We'd have to remodel this building. There wouldn't be a space for public defender...
Right away.
Right away, no matter what. The Armory Project actually opens up space sooner because the old Sheriff Admin building would then become available. We'd have to remodel it and then put someone like probation in there, and then their building becomes available, and that's the building that actually public defender would be interested in.
And that's what I'm thinking about is...
Multiple years down the road.
Right. But that's what I'm thinking about is having a shorter, you know, time span and then extending when needed or something of the like.
We did negotiate, and this is the best that was available in that term. We tried five years. It was a much higher price for five years, even with the extension of five years or a year. So, we went through all of those options, and this is the best of all options that were, was available.
And at this point, I think with the termination clause that allows us to manipulate that 10 years, so it can be two years, it could be four years if we see an opportunity for either a lower cost or a better location, that now that opens that up, where before it, we were definitely much more tied in.
And that's what I was thinking about, is just having that clause if need be.
And the reason why, one of the reasons why it's 10 years is there's, you notice there's no CPI like most agreements like this. If we went with a five-year, it would be the same price, and then CPI increases, which would cost a lot more over that same 10-year span. So, it was a lot of different factors together. But yes, with the six-month, it is possible to get out, if you will, when another space is available, which is at least five years plus down the road from my crystal ball. I'm hopeful within 10.
Yeah. I was just, that gives me what I need.
I'm glad somebody has a crystal ball. So, I don't disagree with some of the comments made, and I'm wondering, especially since there seemed to have been a statement that for any 290 registrants, that you would meet them in a separate location. Can we enter that into Section 6, Use of Leased Premises, and say that no 290 registrants will be seen in, on the premises? That way, we can ensure that that is not just a, not just a statement made, but a use of the building itself that will not be a part of that use? Is that a possibility? How can we implement that into what we're doing rather than just a statement where there's nothing to hold anybody accountable, that that's how we're going to do things, other than that's what we just said out loud?
I think, I would suggest that the language that you should include would be something like, "The public defender's office will comply with all court orders or state law regarding prohibition of 290 registrants." So, just because you're a 290 registrant, you know, like you were saying, there are different tiers. So, a blanket prohibition that they can't come to the office, I'm not sure it's going to pass. So, I think perhaps the language, just saying, "The public defender will comply with all court orders and state law regarding prohibiting 290 registrants," but not just blanket prohibiting them from...
And I'm already more comfortable at that place rather than, I'm trying to figure out how we can implement some of that language into that to ensure that we can... The known is less scary to me than the unknown, right? Those that aren't going to your office are probably a greater threat to that park than those that are going to your office to try and hopefully rectify issues and bumps in the road that they've faced in their lives. But there's still, there is those court orders, and if it's possible to at least enter that into the lease somewhere, then I think that it would at least give the public the knowledge that this is not happening for those specific individuals, not the blanket, but at least those specific individuals at that building literally across the street from the park. And I think if we can at least find a compromise somewhere in there, I would feel more comfortable. I think the price is a little eerie for me. It's a lot, but at the same time, you can't work where you're working. I've been in there. I had to suck in my stomach. Maybe I need to work on my health better, but there's just, there's no room for people to pass by. There's not even a hallway between the desk and the file cabinet. And so, I think we have to move somewhere. I appreciate the fact that now we can cut it shorter if we find something of better opportunity, better cost, whatever the case might be. So, that eases my mind a little bit on the cost, but if there's a way to compromise and find something, that would be great. We have county council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just as a note, when it comes to incorporating or plugging in provisions related to 290 individuals who are under 290 or are subject to the 290 provisions, in the lease itself, just so your board is aware, the enforceability of such a provision would come mainly in the form of a material breaching contract, in which primarily, there's two primary parties here, the lessor and the lese. Lesse being the county. A lessor would be enforcing such a provision by breach of contract to the county. So, just that would be for your board's consideration if you were to plug in such a provision, obligating the County of Lake through the public defender's office to be in compliance, which, you know, generally speaking, it would be, I mean, public defender's office obviously is subject to being compliance with whatever court orders in place to begin with. Now, in the alternative, certainly, and it would be up to Chief Public Defender Ray Buenaventura, he may consider implementing internal policies within his office to reflect or to impose... reflect or to impose, you know, certain standards and provisions as it relates to his office's operations in dealing with these, these types of individuals. That would be also for your board's consideration or suggestion to, to, to the Chief Public Defender as an alternative.
I can commit to that. I can absolutely commit to that. We will, we will prepare an internal policy that guide, that outlines and guide, a guideline on how we conduct ourselves when it comes to those specific issues.
Appreciate the conversation. The need is there. But just like anything else, zoning and whatnot, we want to make sure it's in the right place to do it in the right way. Love to see that policy when it's done as well, so that we can be aware of what those are, just so we can keep apprised as to what is happening in your department, and that's, that's my only ask.
All right, we'll do that.
CAO Parker, and then I'll call Supervisor Green.
I'm sorry, sir. Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure the board understands, I want clarification, so we're not adding language to the current lease, correct?
No, because I agree with County Council. This is a lease between us and the landlord. It would have to be the landlord holding us accountable for these issues that we're talking about, which most likely they get paid, the rest is out of, I don't want to make any claims, but it makes sense to me.
If I can just add to that idea, I do think taking out the contract doesn't belong in the building lease. If you're going to address these issues through an internal policy, one question I would have from my colleagues, for Mr. Buenaventura, is on top of whatever your standing policy is that's going to guide your work, what can we do to kind of put a transparency element in that so we can effectively communicate to park patrons, city council, city managers as to what that policy might be? So the questions may come up similar to that have been expressed here today. They're fair questions. I don't think negotiate, a tough negotiation for this building lease should not be burdened with 290 clauses that may not even be enforceable. But if I were to expand upon your idea on top of developing that internal policy, what can be done to put a little sunshine that to, to give some transparency so we can communicate to the community, to park patrons, to the city, et cetera, what exactly is going on in those offices and what controls are being applied for those instances where you are working with 290 registrants? So can you, so if the commitment is to develop an internal policy, can we add a request that it have a transparency element to it?
Of course, absolutely.
Okay. And I think he's been really above and beyond with his public outreach efforts, and I have every confidence he would do that. So if you guys are comfortable with that, I am comfortable with that. And if you're comfortable moving ahead with the lease with that future promise of that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Can I say one thing? I think it should be your board providing guidance to bring that, even though it's an internal policy, that it comes back as a board item because that...
That would be transparency in itself.
Well, versions of transparency.
And I believe we're getting consensus, and already we have buy-in from Mr. Buenaventura that he is interested in making that a policy. But yeah, bringing it back, I think would be a healthy dose of transparency to make sure that we discuss how we will be interacting with the general public. Thank you.
Yes, you'll have it.
Great.
Thank you.
Just nothing further, Chair. I move to approve the lease agreement between the County of Lake and Lakeport Plaza LLC for office space at 55 First Street in Lakeport and authorize the Chair to sign.
Mr. Chair, if I may, as amended, reflecting the termination provisions by Assistant CAO Carter.
We added Section 3 with the termination clause.
Okay, I'm sorry. As amended, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do have a request. Can we please put up the revised version onto Granicus so that the public can be made aware of those changes as well? Because last I checked, unless I haven't reloaded...
It was not re-uploaded, so...
Yeah, if we can make sure to put it on there.
Johanna, can you?
Because I tried opening it up and I couldn't find that section.
Where it says six months just...
Mr. Buenaventura, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
So it'll be after the meeting?
According to Johanna, it's after the meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just as long as it gets there sometime in the near future.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our open session, other than calendars. So let's start with Supervisor Green.
I get to go to Eureka Thursday for North Coast EMS, and that'll be my last little trip up there. Looking forward to that. Means I won't be peeking in on COC. I didn't bring the flyer, but on Saturday I was able to attend the kind of open house Lake County Land Trust put in out at the New Preserve off Sota Bay Road. It was great. It was, it's a big property. There's a lot of exciting things, possibilities out there, both with the existing channel of Manning Creek, and they're going to open it up and create more of a delta by going back to the old creek channel. So it was lots of people out there. I'd say, wow, 60 people, probably the biggest gathering I've seen out there, lots of birders and stuff like that. So lots of excitement about that project, and I'm happy the land trust was able to acquire that property and has taken the next steps. And I'm glad for this board's support of that effort as well. Other than that, it looks pretty light until next Monday, and I meet with CAO Parker. And looks like we have a special meeting of First Five Lake on the 11th. All right, that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon?
Finish up today. I got the South Deal meeting on Thursday, and then on Friday have the Geothermal Advisory Committee, and then roll right into next week. Pretty light calendar.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a brief update on our CSAC trip on the Agriculture, Energy and Environment, sorry, Natural Resource Policy Committee. We updated our platform, which has to happen every couple of years, just some minor tweaks. And then the Insurance Working Group that we worked through all year brought policy recommendations for CSAC to carry to Commissioner Alara and the Governor and the Legislature on our recommendations for wildfire insurance and home insurance. A lot of the focus is on transparency mitigation efforts. Hopefully, our recommendations will be incorporated. They were also approved at the policy meeting. We have, they're very closely aligned with the Little Hoover recommendations, so waiting to hear more on that. And then I did get appointed to the NACO Task Force for FEMA Reform, so I did have a meeting, kickoff meeting with them the week before we went to Pasadena. That's really exciting. We do have a little bit of experience with FEMA around here. So more to come on that, maybe later this month on a request for working with staff. And then this week, it's a pretty wild week. Tomorrow, there is a NACO Symposium in Sonoma County. It's all week, but tomorrow's the only day that I could make it. And then Thursday, I have my CSAC class. I also have AAA, which I don't think I can make because I also have another meeting that's been organized with Senator McGuire's office. And then in the evening, we are meeting at the Kelseyville Senior Center to review the design, have a presentation with the architects and get community input. And then Friday, I have a meeting with some folks that are looking at how we can optimize our relationship with Redwood Trail Alliance to focus on Lake County trail development. And then Twin Pine for lunch and the Geothermal Advisory Committee. And then I am meeting Supervisor-elect Helen Owen in the afternoon. And then that night is Christmas in the country in Kelseyville. And Saturday is the Hospice Festival of Trees. My tree is done, it's ready to be auctioned off, so you can view it if you're in Kelseyville Friday night. And then Monday, I'm meeting with CAO Parker, and then back on Tuesday.
Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, I know that, I think, just wanted to make sure and mention this back, I think I want to say about a month and a half ago, we were talking about the EPA Committee, and I thought that my term was up, but it's not. It finds, I found out that next year in '25 is that. So still be meeting with them. It's a monthly ad hoc meeting and then two meetings a year. So one in early January or February, and then one more in the summertime. So be looking at some of that work still going on with the Farm Ranch Rural Committee and Communities, Represent Local Government and Tribal Communities. So I'll be looking out for updates on that when I get them. And this Wednesday, I have the, tomorrow, I have the, so the Earth Meeting, East Region Town Hall was adjourned, and also the CSA in Spring Valley was adjourned as well. So they decided not to have meetings in December. They usually don't, so the municipal advisory committees. And then, so I'll be going to the Honor Guard Veterans Dinner. It'll be at Robinson Rancheria. I was asked by some of the gentlemen. So yeah, I get to go. Last year, I ended up missing it because I had Earth and CSA, so, and I think it was like in November, and so that's why I had to miss it, but we're good this time. Thursday, South Deal, and I do have the AAA, but at the same time, I let them know that I have a conflict, so I'm hoping we can reschedule that, but we'll see. Friday, I'm going to be doing meetings here in Lakeport. I have a couple that are tentative, but I'm still just going to come here just in case, so get some other things done. Saturday, Upper Lake is having a Christmas parade, and it starts at 5:30. And so usually what happens is a lot of the folks drive through the main street and around through the school, government street and all of that, and they put lights on their cars and they make, you know, what do you call that, floats and whatnot, and so the kids can enjoy the time with the lights. So that's, that's going to be Saturday. And then Monday, I meet with CAO Parker, and then SURF meeting, that will be in the evening time, 6:00 PM at the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center. I seen PG&E, but I think we, I think we, I don't know why it's still there. Just leave it at that. And I'll be back here Tuesday.
Thank you very much. So also, I was at the CSAC Conference. It was also good to see Supervisor-elect Brad Rasmussen out there at the New Supervisors Institute. I'm on the Administration of Justice, our platform change. We actually talked about Public Defender's Office and creating a little bit better parity between district attorneys and public defenders. It's a little bit of a controversial topic in the sense that not everybody requires a public defender, but everybody still needs to utilize the district attorney's office in the sense that they are the, the people on the case. And so just trying to find a better approach to ensuring that people's Sixth Amendment rights can be fulfilled. Overall, great conference, just great networking, great connections. Looking forward to next year. I'm hoping to be selected as the Chair of the AOJ Committee and planning on starting to, I know EJ Supervisor, Vice Chair Crandall started a long time ago, but I'm finally catching up, and I'm going to start taking some of their supervisor credential program classes. And they're all over the map. You have to take 10 classes, I think it is, and you get to choose. I can forward you the email with all the classes, because I think they go through all the way, calendar of 2025 on, so far?
Yep. I don't know if they still do it hybrid, though. I lucked out during...
There's virtual and there's in-person. It depends. But it's your choice of what classes you want to take, so you don't always have the same participants in the class. I do want to send some appreciation to staff. I worked with the administrative staff. I was invited to represent Lake County at a, as a panelist at the CSAC Conference to discuss how Lake County is positioning themselves to be able to obtain grants, some of the work that we've already done, all the work that's being done for our strategic plans. We brought CSAC here and their leadership team to kind of take a look at what Lake County has been doing. I am assuming, based on the invitation, that either they were desperate because of a cancellation at the last hour, or they were impressed with what we were doing, and they wanted us to highlight all the work that we did. And what was great was typically we go to these conventions or conferences, and you hear about what Santa Barbara County's doing, LA County's doing, and Riverside, and the millions of dollars that they set aside to do all these projects. And you come home trying to figure out, how do you take that scope of a budget and try to implement that within our much smaller, much more meager budget? But this time, the panelists were all rural counties discussing their tactics and their successes. And so definitely thankful to Ben Rickelman and Lisa Judd for the time, and Terry Logsdon for their time in providing me some information so that I sounded well-informed and knowledgeable on everything, and so appreciated that. It's always nice to highlight Lake County wherever we can highlight Lake County. I'm going to move on to calendars. Basically, the rest of my week, I'm going to be doing as much as I can to be in Sonoma County for the NACO Luck Conference as well as the RAC. And on the weekend, there's going to be some holiday celebration. We just approved the Holiday Street Fair over at Lower Lake. And I'll be going there, get some good food over there, and then I'll be back here on Monday, and I don't even know what's going on on Monday. I'm actually having an exciting discussion, in fact, with our Public Defender's Office, seeing how the COC, the Continuum of Care, can work with the Public Defender's Office. I think that behavioral health will be there as well to see what funding that Continuum of Care has access to that can be utilized to help prevent evictions within the county. When I got a number of evictions that go through the court proceedings, granted, those are the ones that get to those final steps. I believe we were in the 350 range per year. What can be done to reduce that, which can maybe help reduce homelessness in the long run? And eviction processes at this moment in time in Lake County do not have Public Defender's Access. What would it take? Is that something the COC can take on that cost in order to enhance what the Public Defender's Office can do? We just want to kind of figure out what's possible, what's not, and I'm guessing if it's something that we can do, we'll bring back to you within the next six months during budget to see how that could work. So just further conversations. And then on that evening on Monday, I will be putting together with Councilman Russ Kramer a, our first Fire Safe Council meeting. Granted, it's more of an initiation into the creating of a Fire Safe Council. We are looking at this moment in time at the Lake County Fire Protection District map and seeing what's, is that the area that we want to do? Do we want to shrink it some more? But we want to initiate that so we can start getting organized enough that we can start soliciting for grants and helping with mitigation of fires in that area. And after that, be here on the 10th for a meeting. So that concludes our calendars and everything else for open session. Next, we will go into closed session. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Works Director. 8.2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9B2E1, One Potential Case. And with that, we are going into closed session. Thank you for joining us.